Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. In case you're wondering about the odd starting time of the meeting, tonight's meeting is our budget hearing, and we are required to start this meeting at 5:01. So I'm happy to say that while it might look like we're late, we're actually spot on time. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. A reminder, face masks are required on school board property, and that includes the boardroom as well as our lobby. Board members are all here present in person. Guess that's redundant, "present in person." I also wanted to remind the public that board members will not be engaging in outside electronics and digital communication during the meeting so that we can devote our full attention to the business here in front of us. To my fellow board members and district staff, as I like to say, "Do as I say, not as I do." Try not to turn your head, as I just did a second ago, away from the mic, because the mic is very sensitive and it doesn't always pick up. So if you are speaking and you're joining us, please speak directly into the mic. I do want to thank everyone who's here for taking the time to join us this evening. And we're going to begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we rise for the moment of silence, I do just want to take a moment to recognize this 20-year memorial of the 9/11 tragedy. I don't know that there's a word big enough to describe the impact that that has made on our nation and on all of our lives here, as well as our children. And I find it most interesting, when I reflect back on my own kids and where they were, certainly I remember where I was, but they remember where they were, and it has changed the way they feel about this country. And I'm happy to say, it has changed the way they feel in a very positive way. And I hope that, although it may not look like it's possible right now, I hope that when we come through this tragedy of COVID, I hope that we will be able to look back and see that it has, in some way, shape, or form, changed the way we look at each other, hopefully for the positive. So with that, that's how I'm going to spend my moment of silence. Please join me. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have some special recognitions today. Thank you. First, let me point out that we have a huge responsibility here in Orange County Public Schools. We have over 200,000 students, and it is impossible to lead our students to success each day without the dedicated and high-quality team members that we have here in Orange County Public Schools. Those team members, 14,000 teachers and instructional staff, come to work every day and pour their hearts and soul into our children. Of that number, 35% have advanced degrees, 33% have a master's degree, and 2% have a specialist or doctorate degree. Because of the incredible partnership and grant, that doctoral number will increase, as we currently have 15 OCPS K-8th grade math teachers enrolled in the UCF OCPS NOS Teacher Leader Academy. This evening, to tell us a little bit more about the academy and the partnership that we have with the University of Central Florida, is OCPS Chief of Staff, Dr. Bridgette Williams. Dr. Williams. And yes, during recognitions, we're allowed to clap.
Chair Jacobs and school board members, the University of Central Florida and Orange County Public Schools were awarded a five-year, $1.5 million grant from the National Science Foundation to lodge a new program that included the creation of a doctoral specialization in mathematics at the University of Central Florida. The research fellows, made up of 15 OCPS educators that are with us this afternoon, will build upon and create a pathway for OCPS teachers at our schools. The majority, the majority earned their master's of education in our K-8 tuition-free mathematics and science education program, supported by Lockheed Martin, UCF, and the OCPS Toddler One Department. As a continuation of this pipeline, the doctoral fellows will earn their degree at no cost, at no cost, and will receive an annual stipend of $10,000 for five years from the University of Central Florida. This will allow OCPS to attract, recruit, and retain math and science teachers. To speak more about the program and to recognize our first, this is our first group of fellows, and UCF staff here with us this evening, is the one and only Dean of the College of Community Innovation and Education at UCF, our own Dean Pamela Sissy Carroll.
Well, Dean, I have to say, that's putting your money where your math is, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Jacobs, and thank you, Dr. Williams. I love working with OCPS and Dr. Williams. If she says, "Let's do it," then I say, "Okay," because I know it will get done and done well, under her stewardship. I'm delighted to be able to recognize my colleagues who have been instrumental in making this program happen. So I would like to recognize, and have you stand when I call your name, to recognize the team that has put this together from UCF. Dr. Sarah Bush, whose brainchild this was. Sarah, thank you. Dr. Julie Dixon, her colleague in mathematics education. Dr. Lisa Brooks. Dr. Malcolm Butler. Dr. Brian Moore, from the math department. And Ms. Trishonda Rutledge, who's our graduate assistant. Was Trishonda able to come? Now, let me have Dr. Butler stand again. Dr. Butler is the Director of our School of Teacher Education, and that means that he's in charge of the work, really, of all of these people. So he had to adjust schedules and do all kinds of magic to make sure he freed up time for them to work with these fabulous 15 teachers who are going to be doctors of teacher education in just a few months. So thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, teachers, for your commitment to this EDD program. And thank you, OCPS. Thank you, board, for your support of this program.
Dean, thank you so much. Dean Carroll. Oh, do we have another speaker? Please.
Board, and OCPS, and Dean Carroll, we are so excited to be here tonight. On behalf of the UCF NOS Grant Team, Dr. Butler with the School of Teacher Education, our College of Community Innovation and Education, and the College of Sciences, we thank OCPS School Board and our OCPS Grant Team for this amazing partnership, as well as City Year Orlando, who's our nonprofit partner on this project. We've worked really hard, and we've somehow managed to make this project a reality. The National Science Foundation NOS program consists of four tracks, and our grant is a track three, which is focused on experienced teachers. It's called the Master Teaching Fellowship Track. And I wanted to share something that I believe is very special and unique about this track and about our project in this track, and that is, we believe we are the only track-three NOS program in the country that leads to experienced teachers, K-8 teachers, earning their doctorate focused in mathematics education. Most of the track-three programs are focused on teachers earning a master's degree, or maybe teachers that have a master's getting some further learning and experiences. You know, we really believe this is something that should be celebrated. In short, we at UCF simply want to congratulate our 15 fellows and say how incredibly proud we are of each of you. And we are excited, as we are embarking on this, just a few months, as Dean Carroll says, more like 60, but this five-year journey with you. We would like to quickly recognize the fellows. So fellows, please stand when your name is called. Deborah Blakesley. Kayla Blakenship, who is not able to be with us tonight. Gabrielle Crawford. Diane Delibovi. J.D. Diaz-Rays. Lori Hart. Julia Keith. Sarah Lumpkin. Nisha Phillip-Malahou. Kelly Penny. Laura Pimentel. Maria Porras. Abby Race. Joslyn Villabera. And Shane Wigan. Congrats again, and I'll now turn it back to Chair Jacobs.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dean, and thank you, Dr. Bush. This is such a great reason to celebrate. We're so excited that we're going to have 15 new doctorates in math. So anyway, thank you again. You know, I'm sure you're familiar with our mission statement, "With the help of families and community, we lead our students to enriching and diverse pathways." We couldn't do this without the partnership that we enjoy over and over again with UCF. It's not just today, it's every day. And there's nothing, I think, that is more valuable in our children's lives, other than their parents, than their K-12 teachers. We know that secondary education's incredibly important, but they only get there after they've come through OCPS and other schools like this. So your investment in our talent is so vitally important to our future as a nation, as well as to the future of UCF. We hope that every student that is here in Orange County Public Schools, whether they choose UCF, whether they choose Valencia, whether they choose to pursue a technical career, we hope that all of them are successful. And we can only count on that, because we have community partners like UCF. So God bless you. Thank you. We're excited. We can't wait to be back here in 60 months to celebrate, but I think we're only half as excited as the 15 of you that can't wait to be back here in 60 months, on the other side of this hard work. So, and I also, I just want to commend, you know, you guys are working really hard every day. I know how hard you work. I have friends who have been in the teaching profession, are still in the teaching profession. It's hard. It's grueling. It's a ridiculously demanding job, but it's like the most, it is the most important job. And now you're going to take on your doctorate. So you just, you're my heroes. So let me, everybody, just give these folks a round of applause, and then we're going to hear from other board members. Member Cobert, what say you?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I just could not be more proud of each and every one of you. And Shane, I wrote some of this in my personal note that you'll receive a little bit later. Education is so important. I was the first one in my family to graduate from college, and it changed the trajectory of my life, of my children's life, and for all the generations that will follow. And that's the impact that you all will have. I have three children. My oldest two are both scientists. They're scientists. They didn't get that skill from me. They got that skill from their math and science teachers, and they're going out and bettering the world for it. That's the impact that you will have, and it's just tremendous. So we all could not be more proud of you. We are so grateful, Dr. Carroll, for this program and this partnership. And I just, I wish you all Godspeed. Thank you so much for what you're doing and your hard work on behalf of our children.
Thank you, Member Cobert. Member Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Cobert said it very eloquently, and my note too, Diane, won't be as eloquent as that. But I do want to say thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you do for OCPS. Thank you for making OCPS a great place for our kids to go to school and for the enriching environment and education that you offer. It just, I can't state enough how much that means to all of us sitting up here at the board. UCF, my heart, my heart, my heart will forever and always belong to UCF as a UCF alumni and huge football fan, but it always makes me super proud when I hear about these, what we offer, what we do in our community. It just makes me even more proud to be an alumni from UCF. So thank you, UCF. Thank you for all, for all, what you're about to undertake and all the hard work. We appreciate it. Go Knights, charge on.
Dr. Jenkins here next. Do you want to, you want to wrap us up at the end and let the other two board members go? Member Bird.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo again what my fellow board members said, and especially what Chair Jacobs said. You know, I've been in the classroom before, so I just cannot even imagine taking on what you all are taking on. Your investment in your profession just further exemplifies how amazing teachers are, that you are not only go to work every day, you know, with the challenges you have already, but you want to better your career and you want to create, create more pathways for kids to get, to get to science and math and, you know, just to, it's just, it's so wonderful. I'm so proud of you guys. Thank you for investing in your, in your career, investing in our children. And thank you to UCF. I am also a UCF alumni, so I am always thrilled whenever I hear of great partnerships. And I just want to take a minute to thank Dr. Williams and Dr. Jenkins for, once again, being innovative and being creative with our community partners and figuring out new and exciting ways to make our district even better and our teachers even better and our community even better. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Bird. Member, okay, wait a minute. Member Gallo? Okay, I don't know how that popped back up. I'm so puzzled. Dr. Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you to the partners and the directors and everyone who was involved in putting this together. And then to the students, I too worked on my doctorate while teaching, and it is not easy. You know that going in, but you have a unique opportunity in that you have a cohort that you can rely on. You will have life events that come up, marriages, babies, things that get in the way of your studies, and you'll think that your plate is too full, but rely on the people who are there to support you, the director, one another, because you can make it through, and it will vastly improve your teaching, and it will enrich your life, and it will provide other opportunities for your career. So congratulations, and I know you can get through it, and I look forward to seeing you all after 60 months, back here with your degree. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Castor Dental. Member Felder.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the faculty of UCF and, of course, our own Dr. Bridgette Williams and Dr. Barbara Jenkins, our superintendent. I remember UCF years ago when it was FDU, Florida Technical University. I also remember taking classes at UCF and working on a post-baccalaureate study and working on a master's in English there, but more than anything, I'm so grateful. My Laura Pimentella, if I'm saying it right, and Maria Porras. Listen, I was a teacher for 40 years, and I'm now a school board member, but my mother was a math major and a math teacher. She learned early at, when I was the age of three, when I had a hard time trying to draw a four, and I told her I didn't like the numbers. So it was numbers, but I said "numbers," so she knew that math was not going to be my direction. She wished it could have been, but she knew it wasn't going to be. But I want to also echo the sentiments of my board members, that we are so happy, we celebrate your desire to not only further your education, but math and science is something that we need. And the fact that you're going to pursue a doctorate, masters and a doctorate, while you are teaching, let me tell you something. Your children, they may hate you in the end, because everything you learn, you're going to give it to them, and they're going to be pushed, pushed, pushed. But at the end, at the end, at the end, they're going to appreciate you, and you're going to appreciate the fact that you were in a learning situation also while you were teaching. I thank you and I applaud you for this leap of faith. And what looks like the end for some of you, because it's going to get rough, could very well be the beginning, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Gold, Vice Chair Gold.
Well, I can't say it much better than my fellow board members. You know, our partnership with UCF and not-for-profit partners like City Year are just invaluable to furthering the education for generations to come. But to you all who have chosen to dedicate your life to education and take this next very serious and big commitment, bravo for your tenacity, bravo for your vision, and bravo for your dedication. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Lopez.
I would like to echo my fellow school board members. So I don't know if you see that the majority of them are women, so oh, 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 so congratulations. I feel very proud, and I want to congratulate you. I even, when I, yes, wow, that's great, you know, on the math field, that's a huge accomplishment. So congratulations. And I even saw a former teacher from Puerto Rico, so I think it's JD. So congratulations as well. So thank you so much for all you do for our students and our community. It is very hard to study while we are teaching. That's a huge sacrifice. I can bet you that we have a lot of mothers here sacrificing and, you know, so, and also people that, you know, during the pandemic is just a huge challenge. Imagine, being a teacher, then study. So I can imagine how many sacrifices you did. So congratulations.
Thank you, Member Lopez. All right, Dr. Jenkins.
I am incredibly proud. I want to thank my good friend, Dean Carroll, all of her team for what you're doing on behalf of UCF, and to my Chief of Staff for helping to negotiate this wonderful partnership. Let me just say to these incredible teachers how proud we are of each of you, and we have great confidence in you. While people may tell you that it's hard, we have great confidence in you. We know every one of you will finish. And I have to say, being a UCF Knight, I'm looking at Rick Collins, who's also a Knight, our former CFO, I have to say, welcome to the Knight Nation. Now, let me tell you one thing. Dean Carroll's going to have to report this back to Dr. Cartwright, President. You got to know the response. When I say "go Knights," you have to know the response. If you know the response, raise your hand, because if you don't, I'm going to need to tell you. Okay, we need rehearsal, because this is the way we're going to end this group, and we'll let you go on about your evening. When I say "go Knights," what do you say, Mr. Collins? Charge on. And you got to say it with vigor, with convincing. So now that you are, no, it doesn't matter where you went to undergraduate school, now that you are a member of the Knight Nation, now that you are a member of the Knight Nation, when I say "go Knights," you have to say "charge on." Are you ready? Go Knights, charge on. Welcome to the Knight Nation.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. All right, we are, we also have a number of proclamations that we are celebrating this evening. The first one is, we are proclaiming September 9th. Yes, you all are. You have a lot of studying to do. 60 months' worth. In one way or the other, we'll be back in these chambers to see you. All right, we're a little late proclaiming this, but we are proclaiming September 9th, 2021, as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day here in Orange County Public Schools. This is the first time we're going to be recognizing this Awareness Day, and I wanted to ask our resident healthcare expert, our Vice Chair, if she would read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. I just hang out with healthcare experts. Proclamation, Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day. Whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorder fads is a continuum of permanent birth defects caused by maternal consumption of alcohol during pregnancy, and whereas paternal alcohol exposure is leading preventable causes of birth defects, mental and cognitive delays, and whereas the exact number of people who have fads is unknown, but it is estimated that up to 1 in 20 U.S. schoolchildren may have fads, a rate comparable to autism, and about 40,000 babies are born with the effects of paternal alcohol exposure annually. And whereas early screening, identification, intervention, and treatment of affected individuals can improve a child's overall development and prevent secondary disabilities, and whereas the prevention of fads is optimal for both infant and maternal health, as well as social and economic well-being of families, employers, and community, and whereas the good health and well-being of the people of Orange County are enhanced by the support of a national effort to educate about and prevent fads. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County does hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as Fetal Alcohol Syndrome Disorder Awareness Day.
That's a mouthful. Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I wanted to also introduce, we have a special guest with us tonight, Lindsay Muns. Lindsay is a parent advocate for FASD. She attended the University of Utah, where she got her degree in community policy and consumer studies. She also studied education and is currently pursuing her master's in social work at the University of Central Florida, something a lot in common here tonight. So, and she now knows the chant, just in case she didn't already. She's a mom of four, something I can relate to. She, including two, on the fad syndrome, which is how Lindsay became a volunteer at the Florida Center for Early Childhood Development in Sarasota, Florida. Along with her husband, she's passionate about spreading awareness about the Along with her husband, she's passionate about spreading awareness about the dangers of alcohol during pregnancy. In her spare time, she enjoys being around the water, spending time with family and friends and reading a good book. I came to know Lindsay when actually her father Roland Muns reached out to me and asked if we would set up a meeting because they wanted to consider enrolling their children in Orange County Public Schools. And given their personal experience, they wanted to make sure that we knew enough about the effects of fetal alcohol syndrome disorder to appropriately care for their children. And I also, I want to recognize Ian Gesuntite for his efforts. He went down to visit a center down in southwest Florida and to learn more about it. And so now we have with us Ms. Muns. And I'm so grateful for you spending some time with us. She's also going, if anybody has time to join us at the Mental Health Commission meeting on Thursday, she is going to give a presentation. So it was an eye-opener for me. I actually thought most people knew alcohol and pregnancy don't mix, but that is not as commonly known anymore as it was. But I had no idea the severe impacts it can have. Ms. Muns, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us and for declaring the Awareness Day. It means so much to us as parents that the OCPS School Board listens to us and they take action. And we're so grateful for that. And we have experienced that. I've spoken with many of you via Zoom and we'll probably be speaking with more of you soon. And I look forward to that. Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder, FASD, is the leading cause of developmental and intellectual learning disabilities in the world, not just the Western world. It's two and a half times more common than autism. It's mostly an invisible disability. I think that many people, when they think of fetal alcohol syndrome, they think of the facial features. Only 10% of the population have those facial features, which means the other 90% of these children are being mislabeled, mishandled. You know, and we can accommodate them better if we know what's going on. And as read in the proclamation, early diagnosis is the key to best success. And there are different learning methods and approaches that can help these children. And we are so grateful to Orange County School Board for being willing to take the training on that and to become an FASD-informed school district. And I know, I know, because I've been an advocate in the FASD world for five years now. I know that OCPS being, you know, one of the largest school districts in the country, to become an FASD-informed school district, you guys are going to be trailblazers. And I am so excited to be a part of that. And I recently went back to school to get my social work degree to kind of help in this efforts where I see needs. So charge on and I can't wait to see what comes from this. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Lindsay, thank you. If you had not reached out to us, again, I know that Mr. Gesuntite knows or Dr. Gesuntite knows a lot about this, but we wouldn't have the awareness that we did if you hadn't, if it hadn't been for you and your husband. So thank you. All right, we are also proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Orange County Public Schools. Now I'd like to call on Member Lopez to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Americans played an integral role in Florida history before the early days of the pioneer to our current legacy of leaders in international trade, technology, education and aerospace. And whereas Hispanic Americans share a rich cultural and linguistic heritage and are a vital part of our economy. And whereas Hispanic Americans have enriched our social, intellectual and artistic life in the United States of America. And whereas Hispanic Americans are the youngest and fastest growing segment of the United States of America and are expected to contribute. 62% of the nation's population growth through 2050. And whereas 43% of our district's student population are of Hispanic descent. And whereas celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th allows us to appreciate and validate the diversity and character of our students, parents, teachers and staff. Whereas celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th allows us to appreciate and validate the diversity and character of our students, parents, teachers and staff in Orange County Public Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County, Florida does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Orange County Public Schools and encourages teachers, administrative staff, support personnel and students to participate in activities in promotion of National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Member Lopez. We are also celebrating and proclaiming September 17th as Constitution Day and September 20th through the 24th as Celebrate Freedom Week here in Orange County Public Schools. And we do have a guest with us. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas September 17th celebrates the signing of the U.S. Constitution in 1787. And whereas the history, significance and effect of the provisions in the Constitution and its amendments is essential knowledge for Florida students. And whereas the content and concepts included in the Declaration of Independence serve as a foundation for civics instructions in Florida schools. And whereas knowledge of the sacrifices made for freedom as well as the values in which this country was founded is an integral part of education for our students. And whereas comprehension of all elements relating to civics and government is vital for Florida's youth in preparing them to become responsible citizens. And whereas teachers and staff in Orange County Public Schools, together with our School Board and the State Board of Education, collaborate as partners in the civic education of our youth. Now for, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, does hereby proclaim September 17th, 2021 as Constitution Day and September 20th through the 24th as Celebrate Freedom Week here in Orange County Public Schools. And let me call on Jamie, Jamie Pew.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I'm a computer programmer by trade. So I'm not a lawyer, but what I did learn about the Constitution, I learned from school. We got a pocket Constitution in my American History class in 11th grade. It's what I believe will prevent us from becoming an idiocracy. Like my T-shirt says about like electrolytes, it's what plants crave. Everybody should be able to understand the law. Everybody, it shouldn't be the realm of high and lofty language. But I think that you actually said it best, Chair Jacobs, when you said that. We live in a country that is a country that is governed by laws. Laws that are adopted by the people we elect into office. You said that June 17th, that you are a rule-following person. But right now, the law is also that there's a Parents' Bill of Rights, HB 241. And that coupled with the executive order 21-175, which is still in effect because the appellate court heard it, that is still in effect that there is a mask mandate ban. Well, the problem is that, again, I'm not a lawyer, but I know that we're having trouble with freedom. We're having a lot of trouble understanding what our freedoms really are and how they're supposed to be practiced. How we're supposed to have freedom to let our children wear a mask or not wear a mask in school. And this is, this is the same school that teaches that we wanted to live under the rule of law rather than arbitrary rule of a few men and women. But students and parents are being given the mixed message of, "Do as I say, not what the law is." The same schools that teach about the importance of civil disobedience of Martin Luther King Jr. and Mahatma Gandhi, the children are being told, "Be compliant or else." My five-year-old was given a mask in school the other day, not by his teacher or by a principal, but by a stranger that happened to be in the classroom. That was a technician that was working and gave it to him. And it feels like the lesson is, freedom isn't important. Freedom is a stranger giving you something to place over your mouth and nose and just go along with it. In my day, that was stranger danger. And now, I'm sorry, but loyalists to the crown are forgotten about. But the patriots of the revolution have schools named after them. And I hope that your push for Constitution Day and Freedom Week is not seen as hypocrisy or mere irony. I don't want to have to explain to my children that they don't get to enjoy the freedoms of not wearing a mask that several board members have exercised in public.
Thank you, Mr. Pew. Your time is up. But I thank you very much for bringing this up. It gives us an opportunity to talk just a little bit more about this important proclamation. It's about civics, it's about civics education. And I think there's a great lack of that. You made, in your comments, you pointed out that there's a law and that you're not, you know, this isn't your specialty, but all citizens should know when they're talking about the law. They should know what it says. So I want to take a minute to read what it says because there's actually no law that says that school districts can't ban masks. There's no law that says that all parents are entitled to send their children, regardless of how sick they are, into school with masks. That law does not actually exist. It would be helpful for those who are advocates against masks to at least spend the time reading the bill. So it's only one sentence. And if you have just a minute, I'd like to read it to you. The particularly important section of chapter 1014, the section is 1014.03. You can find it on online sunshine. It's called "Infringement of Parental Rights." This is also more commonly known as the Parents' Bill of Rights. Here's what it says. "The state, any of its political subdivisions or any governmental entity or other institution may not infringe on the fundamental rights of a parent to the direct upbringing, education, health care, mental health of his or her minor child." Now, if that were the end of the sentence, you could argue that health care decisions include wearing a mask. You could argue it, some might argue not. That's not the end of the sentence. And that's actually where the beginning of this debate begins. Because while the Department of Health tried to enforce and create a rule, they left off the second half. The second half of this says that you cannot do this, governments cannot do this without demonstrating that such action is reasonable and necessary to achieve a compelling state interest and that such action is narrowly tailored and is not otherwise served by a less restrictive means. Now, some might argue this, but this board believes that masks are effective. Not the whole, not completely effective, but far more effective than not having masks. Is it the, is it the most narrowly tailored? Well, if we had the option of social distancing, which unfortunately was taken away from us this year when the state decided that launch ed would no longer be available. So those parents who wanted to keep their children home to keep them safe, as they did last year, those parents lost that parental right to the actual education format. They lost that right because the state and the governor decided that it was of more compelling interest to have the children in school. That might be his right to make that decision. It's our right to make a decision of how to keep our children safe in school. What's more, if you read chapter 120 of the Florida statutes, you will find that there are very specific rulemaking standards. And they're statutorily created. And the executive branch does not have the authority to override the legislature when they create a rule process. And the rule process says that unless the legislature creates the authority for the executive branch to create a rule, they have no authority. In this case, if you read all of chapter 1014, there was no delegation of rulemaking authority to any state agency or to the governor. Therein lies the problem. So it was a very difficult decision from the standpoint of, I'm a strict rule follower. But when I'm looking at a rule, that there is no way I can see how it could legally have been adopted, which is why we're challenging it, along with seven other parties, in seven, actually probably 12 parties in seven different lawsuits. Because it did not follow the Florida statutes. It is not consistent with the Constitution. It has yet to be determined in a final court of law, which will be the Supreme Court. And at the end of the day, if the Supreme Court sees this differently, then we'll abide by that. But until such time, if one more child dies here in Orange County because I followed a rule that I knew was not properly adopted, then shame on my soul. Let's move on. All right. You want to comment? I'm sorry. Vice Chair.
I actually want to read the last proclamation.
Would you? Okay, yeah, because this last proclamation is so important. Start with hello. I love that one. Go ahead, Vice Chair. And then we'll call on Dr. Jenkins.
I thought this was, it's interesting, all our proclamations tonight, but I thought this one was one that we needed a reminder of because we're living through a crisis right now. But we should not forget the crisis of the past and some of the things and the lessons learned that we want to carry forward. And I thought this proclamation really expressed that well. Proclamations start with hello week. Whereas in memory of the 2012 Sandy Hook school shooting, Start With Hello Week was created to promote a culture of kindness and inclusion for students. And whereas, Orange County Public Schools is committed to serving the social and emotional needs of our children, of our students through various activities, programs and clubs. And whereas it is appropriate to address the negative impact feelings of loneliness and isolation have on our students. And whereas it is important to support all students who may be experiencing depression due to physical and social distancing. And whereas by building a culture of inclusion and correctedness, schools and communities can better support children and youth and reduce their risks of bullying and violence. Now therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of Orange County, Florida does hereby proclaim September 20th to 24th, 2021 as Start With Hello Week in Orange County Public Schools and encourage a culture of inclusion and connectedness in our schools and community.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Jenkins, introduction of newly appointed administrators. There are none. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, then I will, I'm sorry, accept a motion to adopt the agenda as drafted. Is there a motion? Member Gallo? Second? Member Lopez? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We have a number of public comments. Let me just see what these are on so we don't miss anybody. Most of them, I think, are on the budget.
Madam Chair, I believe you have two on the phone who are about 10.1, which is one. Sorry, there's one on the phone, 10.1, which is on your consent agenda.
Okay, all right. So before we take up the consent agenda, we will take that comment and we'll take the rest of these when we are at the appropriate time during the budget. Dr. Jenkins, request approval of the millage adoption. You're recognized.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. It is that time for the board to consider final adoption of your budget for this school year. Doreen Conquerino, our acting CFO, will walk us through and then the board will take appropriate action. Let me also mention, in case anyone's curious, our S R grant dollars, actually, we'll get an update on that at the next board meeting. That is not a part of your official operating budget. And one comment that was made regarding air filtration systems, that is covered by our S R dollars. All of our schools and facilities are up to speed on the most appropriate air filtration. Just wanted to add that as well. Ms. Conquerino.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members. Superintendent Jenkins, tonight I bring you the Superintendent Jenkins, tonight I bring you the presentation of the adopted millage and budget. Here is our agenda for today's presentation. We will review the proposed millage, proposed budget, and ultimately, you will need to adopt the total millage and then adopt the 21, 22 total budget. When we're talking about millage rates, you're talking about property taxes. And property taxes impact both residential and commercial property. Who is responsible for each component that determines our property taxes? Just value or a property's market value comes from the property appraiser. The Save Our Homes cap is established by the legislature. The legislature also establishes exemptions such as the homestead exemption, and they determine the millage rate, which is then approved by the board. Here are our property tax values to help fund this school year. Last year, we had a 7.5% increase in taxable values. This year, our taxable values increased by 2.6% based upon the certified tax rule by our property appraiser. The current projection published, excuse me, published in August by the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, as you can see, is fairly steady growth of around 5% per year over the next five years, indicating no long-term impacts from the economic shutdown. This year, the legislature deviated from their practice of rolling back the RLE, the Required Local Effort, to allow for an increase in taxable property values to fund the needs of education. The Required Local Effort is a specific amount that we must levy to receive state funding. This is equalized statewide so that if our assessments go up, our state revenues go down. Discretionary millage is the maximum amount allowed by law. Because we levy the full amount, we receive 4.3 million in additional state dollars to get us up to the state average per student. Additional voted millage is the amount approved by the voters in August of 2018. Overall, there is a rate reduction of .12 mils or 1.75%. This may seem like a contradiction to the previous slide where stated there is no rollback of the RLE this year. This reduction is because statewide taxable values increased compared to the original state estimate used in the first F E F P calculation. The legislature approves a certain dollar amount to be generated by the Required Local Effort. The significant increase in property values would have resulted in more local effort funding beyond what was approved by the legislature. And therefore, a reduction was made to the RLE to generate only the dollar amount approved during the legislative session. This is the history of Orange County Public Schools' millage rates. Required local effort set by the state is the red rate in the middle of each bar. You can see that the RLE has decreased by 1.936 mils since FY10. The legislature sets the millage rate school districts are required to levy. This slide represents the percentage increase in the property values statewide as compared to the percentage increase in revenues generated by the Required Local Effort throughout the state. As you can see, in fiscal year 17 and 18, the legislature did not allow any increase in the revenues from the Required Local Effort. In fiscal years 19 through 21, they had only allowed revenue increases based upon new properties added to the tax roll. The legislature halted their policy, at least for the current year, and has allowed the average RLE millage to remain the same as the previous year. This is to address the revenue shortfalls at the state level. Rollback rate. The rollback rate is a calculation that eliminates the impact of increased valuation. It is only used in the advertisement of the budget and in the millage adoption language. We're required to disclose this to you. The Required Local Effort is 2.89% under the rolled back rate. The total millage is 1.31% under the rolled back rate. With Save Our Homes, residential property can only increase at 3% or CPI, whichever is less. CPI is only 1.4%, so that is the maximum increase for applicable assessed values. With an increase of 1.4% in assessed value and a decrease in the tax rate of 1.75%, the homeowner of a $229,000 home would pay $6 less in taxes. Commercial property is not limited by Save Our Homes. When the increase in property values are combined with a 1.75% reduction in the millage rate, the change in taxes paid for the owner of a piece of commercial property valued at $1 million is an increase of $58 for the year or about $5 for the month. The proposed annual budget. As you can see, the budget process is continuous year round. Remember, the budget is a plan for the year. We must adopt a millage and approve a total budget, a total amount for the budget, excuse me. How the dollars are spent are not set in stone, and it can be amended throughout the year. The budget summary identifies items that impact the district budget. The most noteworthy aspect of the new year is the elimination of the Hold Harmless Provision, or 54.6 million for O C P S. The Hold Harmless provided a substantial increase in per-student funding in the prior year, saving the district from adverse consequences from the loss of enrollment due to COVID-19. In 2022, the district will have more students with less money. Board members continue to identify staff as a priority. This budget includes nonrecurring bonuses or supplements for employees. As you know, categorical funds are restricted and must be spent as intended. The budget includes an increase in the teacher's salary categorical funding of 3.2 million, which will provide for a minimal recurring increase in classroom teacher salaries. Also included in the proposed budget is an increase of 1.2 million in the mental health assistance allocation, which aligns with the board's priority to support social and emotional learning. The temporary infusion of federal funding has contributed to an increase in fund balance by allowing operating expenses directly related to the pandemic to be shifted to S R funding. The 2022 proposed budget maintains focus on the district's strategic plan and preserves academic programs, retains highly qualified teachers, and protects arts, athletics, and student activities. Thankfully, our local citizens value public education and continue to support the special millage. The special millage is folded into the operating budget and treated as recurring revenue to support our current level of operations. Here is the summary of the five major funds that make up the operating budget. Each fund has unique types of revenues and appropriations designed to accomplish specific purposes. The primary difference between the tentative budget and this budget is the inclusion of carryforward projects within the capital projects budget. In the tentative budget, capital projects were 1.4 billion, and now they are 2.1 billion. Special revenue now includes our food service program as well as other special revenue. The grants budget are approved throughout the year as grants are brought forward for board approval. The general fund. The general fund is the operating budget of the school district. The primary source of funding comes from the Florida Education Finance Program, or F E F P. Per-student funding is equalized statewide. Equalization means that increased revenue from local sources does not necessarily cause an overall increase in funding. For instance, an increase in Required Local Effort revenues is offset by a reduction in state revenues. However, the additional voted millage is not equalized, which means we keep all revenues generated to benefit the students of O C P S. Estimated revenues. Here is the actual F T E for past years along with the projection for this year. Our current projection for FY22 is 204,857 F T E, an increase of 4,006 F T E over the fourth calculation of 200,851. This forecast incorporates all K-12 students, including charter school, M K A, family empowerment scholarship students. However, it does not include V P K students. There are still unknowns related to the pandemic, and we do not yet know what the impact will be to our projection. As of the 10-day student count from our schools, our overall population remains very close to where we ended the prior year, at approximately 200,000 students, which includes 15,000 at charter schools. Not meeting our enrollment projection will impact our funding. It is worth noting House Bill 7045 eliminated the Gardner Scholarship Program and will fold any Gardner Scholarship students residing in Orange County into the district's F T E, similar to the family empowerment scholarship students. Since these students are not included in our present enrollment forecast, it is possible the district will experience an increase to F T E. A student reserve allocation has been set aside for this purpose and will be handled as pass-through funds. This graph represents the total state appropriations as a percentage of the total over the last four years. The first grouping, education, includes early learning, public schools, community colleges, and universities. As you can see, the percentage of the budget for education slightly increased from the prior year. It went from 28.5% of the budget to 28.6%. This graph includes all funds, including the infusion of federal funding. This next graph represents just the education appropriation as a percentage of the total over the last four years. As you can see in the second grouping, less money has been appropriated to public schools. The reduction is primarily due to the statewide decline in student enrollment. Here we have a comparison of funding per student over the last 14 years. This graph is based upon the second calculation for all years. For this year, our regular per-student funding is $466 above July 2007's second calculation, shown in orange, or 6.37% increase. For 2022, regular per-student funding is $29 above last year's amount. This equates to a 0.38% increase in per-student funding. Including our special millage shown in dark blue, our total funding increased $66 per student, even with the special millage and including all the categoricals. You can see, we still have a reduction in purchasing power of about $714 over the July 2007 amount. Without the voters and voters in Orange County supporting the special millage, we would have to make, we would have a much larger shortfall in needed revenues. Here's a graph of the state general revenue in support of education. The percentage of general revenue going to education decreased from 51.3% to 48.8%. The percentage remains well below the pre-lottery amount of over 60% and at nearly the same level as the Great Recession. This graph shows the percentage of general revenue going to support K-12 schools over the past nine years. You can see the percentage of state general revenue supporting public schools has decreased this year. In the early years of the Florida Lottery, 60 to 70% of lottery dollars coming to education were for public schools, as seen in the green bars. That number is now only 35%. There are no dollars allocated again this year for the school recognition program. Of the 35% coming to public schools, none of these dollars would be considered educational enhancement. 87% supports regular F E F P funding, and 13% is for the district's post-secondary program. The orange or rust-colored bar at the top is primarily funding the Bright Future Scholarship Program. Here is the breakdown of our estimated revenues by source. There was very little change in these percentages from last year. The federal slice does not include S R funding as this chart represents the general fund operating revenues, and the small federal portion is indicating what we receive in Medicaid reimbursement and R O T C funding. Appropriations. There are financial implications that need to be considered when approving the district's FY22 budget. It is difficult to estimate F T E enrollment changes. The pandemic has provided parents an opportunity to explore other options for their child's education. And we have seen an increase in enrollment in virtual education. Again, our funding is based on projected enrollment of 204,857 F T E, an increase of 4,006 students over the fourth calculation of the prior year. If the projected enrollment is not realized, funding will be impacting. The legislature increased F R S rates by nearly 1%. The impact to the general fund is about $8.4 million. If we add in food and nutrition services as well as grants, the total impact is 9.5 million to all funds. The Family Empowerment Scholarship Program began in 2020 with an impact to O C P S of 10.6 million. The legislature continues to increase the number of scholarships available, and the 2022 impact to O C P S is projected as at 3,997 scholarships going to private schools with an estimated impact of 25.7 million to O C P S. S R funding is being infused into the general fund budget, freeing up nonrecurring dollars for other purposes. Functional appropriations remain fairly constant. Around 75.6% of all appropriations are in the instruction and instructional support functions. The instruction and instructional support area shows the greatest increase in appropriations this year. There is a slight increase in school administration as we continue to open new schools. The district continues to have the lowest administrative costs per student among large urban districts in the state and the 11th lowest expenditure level of all 67 districts. This concludes the general fund portion of the presentation, and Judith Padres will present the capital budget.
Thank you.
The capital projects fund. The FY22 budget is 2.1 billion. The primary, primary revenue source are sales tax, I'm sorry, sales surtax, property taxes, and impact fees. The budget is built with minimal state support, and the primary uses are for district-wide capital projects, comprehensive renovations, new schools, capital renewal, and dev service and operations. This graph reflects our five-year forecast of capital revenues. The light blue line for other state revenue shows our C O N D S projected appropriation. There are, these are generated from auto license fees and mostly used for safety purposes. We are anticipating to receive 7.3 million. The Pico line in burgundy shows the funding that we will receive from the state as pass-through for charter capital. The estimated amount is 8.52 million. As a reminder, there are no guarantees that the legislature will continue to fully fund charter capital from Pico funds moving into the future. The gold bar represents our sales tax revenue projections. We're estimating 233.7 million for FY22. This, this estimates are a combination of the FY21 revenue collections and E D R projections. As with any other funding source, we will continue to review our numbers to ensure they align with collections and appropriations. The dark blue bar shows our impact fees. We are projecting to receive 61.7 million for fiscal year 22. The orange bar represents our one and a half capital meal revenue projections. This is the equivalent of 247.8 million. This graph illustrates our capital projects used. This graph illustrates our capital projects' use of funds for the upcoming year. Carryforward funds have now been incorporated into the budget. The largest portion of our budget is used for district-wide capital at 29.99%, which includes appropriations for district-wide construction, functional equity, ancillary, major painting projects, capital renewal, and site improvements. This is followed by additional schools at 25.09%, and the third largest use of funds is to cover the cost of our comprehensive needs at 17.86%. The adopted capital plan reflects the following. Funding for 23 relief schools, 13 elementary schools, 1K-8, 5 middle schools, and 4 high schools. The opening year is based on recommendations received from the Advanced Planning Committee. Functional equity, these are projects primarily intended to add permanent instructional space and to reduce some portable instructional spaces. This budget also allocates funding to a list of pre-2003 sales tax schools. These are schools that never made it to the original sales tax list because of the recent construction work at that time. Funding is also included for repurposing schools. Capital renewal, in accordance with the referendum, a portion of the sales tax revenues is transferred to the capital renewal fund to cover major system replacement needs. This plan continues to fund that transfer. Based on anticipated projects, we are projecting that the capital renewal fund will be fully committed by fiscal year 2029. These are our five, five-year new school openings. Our CIP is funding schools based on the opening year recommended by the Advanced Planning Committee. We have three new schools that open in August of 2021, followed by five schools, three elementary schools, 1K-8, and one middle school opening, opening in August of 2022. In August of 2023, we're opening one middle school. In August of 2024, we're, we're planning to open three elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. Again, the opening years in the, in this plan align with the Advanced Planning Committee's recommendations. Our comprehensive projects that are in the construction phase. This slide only shows the projects that are moving into the construction phase this year. Orange Technical College at Orlando and Building 8 at Hungerford Elementary School. As you know, we have projects that are in their second year of construction that are not shown on this slide. Comprehensive projects that are in design. The design of Orange Technical College at Mid-Florida, Westside, and Winter Park is projected to be completed in fiscal year '23. These are part of the final school projects from the original list of 136 sites. In addition, we have five pre-2003 sales tax projects that will be moving into the design phase during fiscal year '22. Those are Colonial High School, Howard Middle School, Lakeview Middle School, 3 elementary school, and Winter Park High School. Our adopted CIP also includes funding for buses, which are on a 10-year replacement cycle, portable moves and leasing, which is also included to help manage population fluctuations. Of the $31.4 million, $10.1 million is for leasing and $21.3 million is for portable moves and installations. Charter school funding is also included, it's just a flow-through from the state. And there are dollars again included in the plan for district-wide painting needs and for digital technology replacement, which addresses replacement of classroom technology and digital curriculum-related infrastructure. This concludes the capital portion of our budget presentation.
The Debt Service Fund. This fund is used to retire the indebtedness of the school district has incurred for construction projects. The primary source of funds is the transfer from the Capital Projects Fund. There are no significant changes to the Debt Service Fund. Special Revenue Fund. The Special Revenue Fund for past years included the district's food service program. Beginning in 2022, based on new reporting standards, the district is required to add special revenue other funds to the financial statements. These other funds are primarily school internal accounts and the extended day programs. Other federal grants such as ESER, Title I, and IDEA are amended into the budget as approved. The Food Service Program is supported primarily from federal reimbursement and USDA commodities and also from fees charged for meals served. Food and Nutrition Services ended FY21 with a significant $26.6 million gain in fund balance. The USDA has granted flexibilities that have allowed program operators to continue serving meals to all children, and this will continue through 2022 school year. Economy of scale in food preparation, along with federal reimbursement for all student meals, has allowed us to operate at a gain. There are no changes in meal prices again for this school year. Special Revenue Other are funds restricted or committed for specific purposes. School internal accounts are used to account for monies collected and dispersed by each school through fundraisers and other student-related extracurricular and co-curricular activities. Extended Day Accounts are used to account for all monies collected and dispersed in support of the program. The extended day programs before and after-school activity provides a safe and supportive environment for children. The main source of revenue are user fees. The Internal Service Fund. The Internal Service Fund accounts for the district's Employee Benefit Trust Fund, Property Casualty Loss Fund, and Printing Services Fund. The Employee Benefit Trust Fund revenue comes from board contributions for employee coverage and deductions for employees and dependent coverage. The expenditures of this fund include payment for medical claims, prescriptions, and mental health. Through ESER funding, the district was able to reimburse the Employee Benefit Trust Fund for the cost of COVID claims and prescriptions totaling $12.8 million. The district currently offers three plan options with one of the employee-only options available at no cost to the employee. Board contributions for employee-only coverage are $9,289. The Property Casualty Loss Fund includes payments for property, liability, and workers' compensation claims. Revenues for this fund are from charges to other funds. The Printing Services Fund is self-supporting and receives revenues from charges for services to schools and departments. And now for our remaining actions. I will turn this back over to the superintendent for comments and discussion. Once the discussion is completed, the total millage will need to be adopted, and subsequently, the 2021-22 budget will need to be adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Conquerino, and to Ms. Padres and to Mr. Collins for all of your diligence. Members of the board, as required by statute, I present to you a balanced budget for the 2021-22 school year. As mentioned by Ms. Conquerino, our budget remains fluid throughout the year as we make necessary amendments when required. So we would request your approval both of the millage and of your final budget. We are certainly open to, I know that we've had one-on-one meetings and preliminary budget hearing questions that were dealt with previously. Certainly stand ready to answer any additional questions and hear your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. We have, we have Member Castor Dental, push her button to be recognized, and Member Colbert. Let me mention that I have six members of the public that would like to speak to the budget. And unless board members have specific questions, I'll take public comments at this time. All right, thank you. Let's begin with Ashley Freem. I know I did not do good with your name. But you're gonna help me out when you come up, I trust. Takes me out a few times, I apologize.
It's okay, I'm used to it.
I bet.
Freem.
Freem. I was close.
Totally, that's totally fine.
Yeah, thank you.
I answered anything.
Thank you.
So, my name is Ashley Freem. I'm a teacher with Orange County Public Schools, and I'm here today to urge you not to adopt the budget as it is written. The current budget and the proposals for salary increases for teachers is something not only to be ashamed of, but something you should not pass. After you vote, I don't want to hear regrets about what you're passing or wishes about how it could be different. You are not powerless, and you have the ability to change this. I've heard time and time again that there's no money in the budget, but this is the budget you guys crafted from scratch. Now is the time to ask yourselves, if not you, who? Stand up and do the right thing. Do not pass this budget as is. Amend it, look harder, and find respectable raises for your educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vail.
I'm back again. What I would like to discuss now are areas that I believe need more funding in the budget to better support our students and staff through the pandemic. During your late-August meetings, the board echoed the concerns of parents that the Department of Health was behind on communicating quarantines and close-contact exposures. It also noted that there were inaccuracies in the dashboard that didn't reflect the real-time happenings at each school. Specifically, quarantines were assigned that were not made public on the dashboard. Additionally, we know weekend reporting is far lower than when the schools and Department of Health are better staffed, which results in a Monday evening dump of new cases that far outspace the days before and the days after, making Monday the most dangerous day of the week to send our children to school for lack of information. I would like to propose that OCPS consider adding to the budget money for a school-specific role that would be responsible for communication between the Department of Health, OCPS, and parents. LA County has a great outline of what this school employees' responsibilities are, and I ask that you model what they have done for a school compliance officer role. A designated school COVID-19 compliance officer is responsible for establishing and enforcing all COVID-19 safety protocols and ensuring that staff and students receive education about COVID. A designated compliance officer also serves as a liaison to the local Department of Health for sharing site-level information to facilitate public health action. By adding this role, communications and decisions would be more consistent across the district, and the level of accuracy and timeliness that we expect as parents and community members would be upheld. Also, I would like to talk for a moment on classroom for lunch support. How can you stress the importance of equity and learning environments for all students while not looking at the fact that the level of safety during lunch varies so greatly from school to school? Personally, I check my son out for lunch, so he doesn't need to be in the cafeteria unmasked with other students, and we do that five days a week. But that can't be the only mitigating strategy offered for parents at school. Not every parent has the luxury of time and flexibility in their schedule. Some elementary schools have requested schedule changes for lunch, so lunches are divided by grade and are no longer staggered every few minutes, so that there are fewer children in the lunchroom at one time to allow for more spacing and less mixing of cohorts, which is great. Other schools have been able to implement outdoor lunch options that parents could opt their child into, weather permitting, of course. And we would just ask that money be allocated for more resources to allow for more options for lunch, to have children spaced out at all schools, especially elementary, versus just some. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Mr. Hodge.
Thank you. See if we can get this.
Yeah, you can pull it.
I'm sorry, I'm, it's, you know, I blame my parents.
Pull the mic off. You did that last time, it worked well.
I got yelled at, though, but, you know.
By who?
My friends. Sadly, my friends are not here to hear me, so I apologize to them. But Chair Jacobs, thank you for dropping some knowledge on us. I just wish that the rest of the audience was here to hear it earlier. Thank you to all of our school board members, and of course, Dr. Jenkins, thank you for all you do. I would be remiss to be here tonight and not ask that you continue to exercise every possible option to increase the wages and benefits for our teachers, administrators, and school support staff, specifically to revisit the, the reserve funds and make sure that they're adequate for what we need, but not so much so that it inhibits the use of funds for other areas where they are so desperately needed. The faculty and staff are the heart of Orange County Public Schools, and they are entirely responsible for why I'm here today speaking to you. As we continue, you can blame them, by the way. As we continue to grow as a district and a community, we must be able to offer competitive and enticing benefit packages, not only to bring, but also retain the best and most effective teachers and staff. I also am calling on Governor DeSantis to release the $7.4 billion of ESER funds sitting in Tallahassee. My understanding is that Orange County has submitted a request for $112 million, which has yet to be fulfilled. If we can do anything as a community to support you in this initiative, please do not hesitate to let us know. With regards to COVID in the budget, I will simply ask that you please look at the Rockefeller Foundation and their newly released COVID-19 testing in K-12 schools. The outline is a step-by-step for school, step-by-step program for school districts and would need to take, the school districts would need to take to implement this school testing. The purpose for this, I'll be brief, is testing can reduce community spread and keep schools open. According to the CDC, at least 50% of infections are likely contracted for somebody that is asymptomatic. A routine screening testing program, which regularly tests people without symptoms, is a crucial tool to reduce the spread of virus and protect our students, teachers, and staff. Testing in school will help ensure equitable access. Many families do not have the access to adequate testing or do not have the time to go sit in line, as the lines have become very long at some of our community testing facilities. Testing also increases the confidence in the school's reopening plans. Students, parents, and guardians and staff may be anxious about returning to school, but if they know that there's a testing program in place to protect their families and their kids, they may be more apt to send their kids to school. School spirit is best when it's at school. Regular COVID-19 testing helps keep students on the field and their friends and parents in the stands. Please consider regular COVID testing at school. Thank you again for everything that you do, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. I, I kind of want to respond, but I know we have two more speakers, so if you can hold on for a minute. I wish the budget were a little easier to explain, but let's give it a shot. Ms. Cousins.
Good evening again. This is another request that we would like to see added into the budget, and that is for a grade-level virtual teacher. I know that launchet is not an option this year thanks to the FDOE. Not only was it defunded, but they will also not give accreditation for attending a virtually-linked classroom longer than a 10-day state-issued quarantine. That being said, with such a large amount of our students having experienced a quarantine at least once already this year, I'd like to be consider allocating funds to hire grade-level virtual teachers that can be available to assist students while they are quarantined. Be it state-issued or a voluntary quarantine. We know that our children learn best when they're in the classroom. That's something everyone here can agree with. Our children's learning during quarantine should not be put at risk because one teacher or another has different expectations as to what constitutes being present while quarantining. Canvas is available at every grade level, and it should be expected that every teacher keeps their virtual classroom up to date. But it shouldn't be expected that a teacher be available to be both classroom students and quarantine students throughout their day. Please consider hiring virtual teachers that can handle assisting children through their day-to-day coursework from home via the tools already available in the OCPS portal. What this exactly looks like can vary based on grade level. Obviously, K-5 is different than more subject matter expertise that's needed at the secondary grade levels. This team would be responsible for checking in throughout the day with any quarantined students assigned to them and being available for video conference if needed to get through the coursework. The only time this role would default back to the teacher would be in circumstances where the entire class is quarantined. Thank you.
Thank you. And Matthew, Mr. Hazel.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matthew Hazel. I'm the OCCTA treasurer. President Dormel could not be here tonight. She was at our impasse hearing all day. Wasn't sure she could get down here in time to get her name on a card, so with the board's indulgence, I'll be reading her remarks. CTA is shocked and saddened that after a year like no other, the school board and district leaders failed to budget for employee raises. Educator sacrifices have never been more. Never has more been asked of our teachers. Never have the demands and extra tasks been so great. The members of our bargaining unit followed every demand and directive and gave even more than what you asked for. They worked countless unpaid hours to ensure student achievement. Still, our proposals have been rejected over and over. The same supplements other districts generously gave to teachers who taught hybrid, OCPS repeatedly rejected. We hope that you are watching the impasse hearings. We hope that you are watching every bargaining meeting. We hope that you understand how disrespected and underappreciated the members of our bargaining unit feel. In a recent survey, 94% of our members rejected the district's salary proposals. Only 8% of our members stated they feel supported by the school board and district leaders. 92% do not. The divide between the administration and the employees has grown wider and wider over the last two years. What will you do to lessen that divide? You have over $185 million in ESER funds, which are needed to advance student learning during the pandemic. However, you stalled impact bargaining meetings of the health and safety procedures until after school started and gutted the district health and safety procedures manual, eliminating 2/3 of the provisions. We begged you to sign off on the mere provisions that have been agreed to twice previously, that medical experts agreed were essential, that were recommended by the CDC, that you have the funding to support. We were told by the school board, we were told the school board demanded that they have the power to decide safety provisions, that an MOU not be signed. How did that work out? We saw more COVID-19 cases in the August and the first weeks of September this school year than in the entire first seven months of last school year. Every child, every employee's health and safety is your legal and moral responsibility, and you have the funds to address those needs. Please stop fighting with us and start working with us. Enough is enough. People are suffering because of your decisions. You ask so much of teachers, and yet give so little in return. Last year and this year, you received even more than you asked for. Why would a district not reward employees for heroic work during a pandemic? Please pay our employees what they're worth. Please use your funds to protect health and safety. Please budget for raises. And for myself, I will just say that your budget shows your priorities, and when you budget zero local dollars for raises for all your teachers, that shows your priorities, too. It shows what is important to you, and your teachers hear you. Thank you.
All right. Let's hear from Member Castor-Denial.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about, this is from Ms. Concolino, the slide number 29. Budget implications. And I know that this last legislative session, there was a record budget passed for education dollars, $22.8 billion. I know that was the biggest education budget they passed in the state, and they were very proud about that. And then I see on page 29 here, slide 29, that along with that increase in the budget that they allocated, they also increased the rate that we have to contribute to Florida retirement system to the tune of $8.4 million, and that comes out of our operating funds.
Correct.
And those are the same dollars we would pay our teachers from.
Correct.
The Family Empowerment Scholarship, that includes all of the voucher programs from the past, like the McKay Scholarship.
McKay is in addition to the Family Empowerment Scholarship.
In addition. The Family Empowerment Scholarship, does it include the Florida tax credit? The former Florida tax credit scholarship?
I, I can't answer that.
Okay. I believe it does, but even if it doesn't, I'm looking at the amount that the Family Empowerment Scholarship of $25.7 million, it isn't simply a pass-through. I mean, someone might characterize it as that, but it's, it's money that is transferred to pay for students who then go to a private school in our district, which could also be a religious school, I guess, so that goes to the vouchers.
Correct. We don't, we don't, we don't ever see the revenue.
Okay. So that's also a big chunk, because that program has been heavily promoted and expanded by the legislature every year. So they're trying to kind of undermine the public schools with that. You don't have to answer for that. But, so that's, that's a loss from our operating funds, again. And then we have, I don't think you mentioned it, the class size reduction?
Yeah, the class size reduction this year is $25.5 million.
That's how much they're giving us?
No, that's, that's how much we're losing.
Okay, so the class size reduction is required by the Constitution. So the legislature decided to cut the amount of money to all the districts, and how much was that an amount of?
For us specifically, it's $25.5 million.
$25.5 million that we were expecting to get. So $25.5 million, we still have to abide by the Constitution and the law, but now we have to fund it, too. Okay, so that's $25.5 million we were expecting to have, to pay for our teachers. So while they tout that this is a record education budget, they also made a record unfunded mandates that directly impact our ability to adequately pay our employees. So I know, as a teacher, former teacher, how hard it is to make ends meet on the salaries we, we offer, and I know that what we did offer was for some insulting. And I know that it doesn't always send a message that we need to, to our employees, that we care, that we know, and we keep adding more to their plates. And I don't know how we get around it. Adopting the budget, we're basically adopting the money that comes in.
Correct.
This isn't the negotiations, though, for salary.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure everyone knows that we are, our hands are really tied, and there have been a lot of extra requirements put on us, and there's no way around that. So I just wanted to put that out there, and we will continue to fight for increased funding, but we also have to fight against increased spending on our vouchers, increasing our, reducing the amount of money they give us for class size reduction. We have to continue to fight the legislature on so many fronts, just to provide a livable wage. I know that I will continue to support looking for ways to make our resources available for our pay, because that is necessary. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Castor-Denial. Member Cobert.
Thank you. Ms. Concolino and Ms. Padres, thank you for your presentation. Almost all of my questions, really all of my questions, were answered during our detailed sessions and meetings together, so thank you for that hard work in answering those questions and even the follow-up. I do have one question on slide 33. Budgeted capital revenues by source. So in looking forward to 2026, it shows a dramatic drop in the sales tax revenue. Can you tell me where that comes from? Is that due to the sunset of the half penny?
That's correct.
So that wouldn't be reflected in there, because we, we don't have that yet?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That explains, because that's a dramatic drop right there, so that's one thing that will be very, very important to us as a district and as a community going forward. And then one very quick comment. There's not anyone up here at this table that doesn't agree with paying our, our teachers and our employees more. I want to let you know that we had a, a, a long meeting yesterday, virtually, with five of our local House representatives, and one of the points we really drove home with them was that we need the funding to pay our employees a competitive wage in a competitive market. So they did well by our new teachers last year with the raise, but we need to make things right with our veteran teachers. So we not only need the funds to do that, but we need the flexibility to be able to make those decisions, because the vast majority of our budget is tied up in categoricals. That's where our funding is required to be spent. But please know, for our teachers and for the rest of our employees, we are fighting hard. That's a meeting we had yesterday. Five of our local delegates showed up and listened to what we had to say, and, and I believe they'll, they'll work hard for us. So please know that we are out there fighting for you to get those funds. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Cobert. Vice Chair Gold.
Thank you. Could you pull up slide 7, please, which is the millage rates? So I think sometimes when we talk millage rates, we don't really think about the dollars that those millage rates equal, and that the loss, while we're seeing unprecedented increase in cost of living, especially in Orange County, is not being acknowledged by the majority of our legislators. They don't seem to make, they don't seem to make this connection either. And I think it's very important that, while it was covered quite well by, by our team, that we highlight that this represents dollars. This isn't just a percentage number. This represents the dollars that we end up getting for our budgets. So could you also go to the CPI slide, and I think that is slide 23. So that millage rate then causes what we're about to see here. So while we have had some dollars go up, that blue line is where cost of living is. And that, by the way, is now old news, because every day I'm getting new percentages on how much housing has gone up, groceries have gone up, gas has gone up. I mean, we've seen almost a dollar increase in gas in a very short period of time, for no real apparent reason on that one, because I don't think it's cargo, like so many other things. And what we asked for, and frankly, since I've been on the board, but especially in the last three years, because we saw a rapid inflation in Orange County, because it's a popular place to live. So people are coming from higher appraised values and coming here and plopping down cash on houses, and things are just, have gone out of whack. It exacerbated during the pandemic. But we've asked for more unencumbered dollars year after year, and what ends up happening is we don't get that. We get encumbered dollars. So for example, the wonderful, well-deserved $1,000 that the governor sent out. He didn't give that to the school boards to disperse. He decided who was going to get it and who wasn't going to get it. And oh, by the way, it's not just teachers that are part of our educational team, but it's our bus drivers, our food service workers, it's our cleaners, which we hear are pretty important in all the, the comments that, that we have coming into us. And there's no acknowledgement of their gap in wages. Now I'd like you to go to slide 15, which really talks about it. We, we just had a teacher who talked about that we started the budget from slide zero, or you might have that long and scratch. Yeah, from, from scratch. She said we did it from scratch. It is the slide where it shows each of the buckets of, of the summary. It might be one more. Sorry. It was 15, there it is. So when the dollars come in on this summary slide, most of these we don't get decide to put here. They come in a prescribed legislative way. So we're told what we're going to have pretty much for general. You know, the one mil does, does help in there, but again, that we went to the community with a referendum that's still prescribed. We can't just willy-nilly decide what to use that money for. We have to keep our commitment to the community on what they voted for. Debt service, we have to pay. Capital projects, we have to do. If you live on the west side of town, Lake Nona, and now on the east side of town, which is in rapid growth, you know we need schools. We absolutely need the schools. So that general fund is very, very prescribed. There's very little wiggle room in there. In fact, when it was calculated initially by the staff, it came up with $25 per employee after all of the money that was encumbered was placed where it was supposed to be. So I absolutely agree, and have said this over and over, that we need to work together, not only with our unions, but our communities, our business owners, our other elected leaders, to get that light bulb to go off, that you can't say, here's a piggy bank, but you can only use a dollar out of a million dollars of that piggy bank any way you want, which is about the ratio. So, you know, we do need help in communicating this message that education and our frontline teams are the most important component in our society, right by healthcare workers, fire, police, all the essential things that make our communities work. But they hold our future in their hands. So let's band together and, and find a way to pierce that message. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair Jacobson. Thank you, Budget Committee. I, I know when you all talk with us individually, I had a lot of questions and you all, a lot of things I didn't understand, and you were very kind in trying to go over and help me understand some things. But I have a couple of other questions still. On page 16, you say, what are the other, I want to, the other special revenues. The special revenues now include our food service programs as well as other special revenues.
That is extended day. There's new state reporting requirements, so now extended day and internal accounts, school internal accounts, need to be folded into the special revenue.
Okay, so the, you say the extended day, that will involve like a VPK people, pre-k kindergarten? After school, okay, after school activities. Okay. Also, so we will get extra money for that, right? That's what you mean? They'll get more money to be able to run that, or they won't have it?
No, we don't, we don't get money for that. The, the internal accounts, they, they raise their own, and the extended day is user fees.
Okay, yeah. That's not a lot of money, but thank, okay. So now, I also want to thank, on page 23, where we say that without the voters in Orange County supporting the special millage, we would have much larger shortfall. And you all explained to me about the shortfall. What's happened, so I appreciate the voters doing that, because it would be worse. So please keep, when we offer like capital funding or whatever, the penny, whatever tax, whatever, please keep voting so that maybe, as Board Member Gould said- please keep voting so that maybe, as Board Member Gould said, the light bulb will probably come on, on some of our state legislators. Okay, the next thing I want to say. Okay, you can see that the percentage on Page 25, you can see the percentage of state general revenue supporting public schools has decreased this year. Why has it decreased? Has it decreased because they have, legislators have decided they're gonna decrease it, or why?
I can't answer for them, but...
I'm so sorry.
But I believe probably the pandemic took some of the state revenues. So there was less that went towards education.
Okay, and again, perhaps, and Superintendent has been very kind to have me come in her office, and she's like a math teacher, explaining how things work because I want, I wanna be able to explain to members of my constituency why this is happening. Because as Member Cassidy said, that a lot, they think we're insensitive. We're not, most of us up here have taught. We're not, we understand. But we're looking for the same answers they are. And lastly, I wanted, you say the class size reduction. We lost a 2.5 million cut. I think it's...
25.5.
I'm sorry, that's right, 25 million. If I could find some way to have that, we're not to explain. So when I talk to teachers and I talk to people who work in the service industry for OCPS, they can understand. And again, I echo the sentiments of my Board Member Pam Gould. We gotta do something to turn the light bulb on because they need to understand that when we're cut, we're working with what we have. We're not sitting here just twiddling our thumbs and saying, oh well, oh me, oh my. No, we're being cut. So again, I appreciate the voters and I appreciate the outcry because that's what, that is what is going to take, an outcry, to make our legislators and the governor understand that the money needs to be given. Because Florida is the number one tourist attraction in the world. Even with the pandemic, people still was coming. They have not yet stopped coming. So monies are coming here, so we need it. But I wanted to thank you for your very thorough presentation and answering all of my questions when you called me on the phone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Felder. Oh gosh, this is always so difficult to work through. I wish that Math, he had stayed with us and, is it Freeman? I believe it is? I wish she had stayed with us. One of the challenges I find is that, I know it's complicated, but some of it, if you just bring it down to its simplest terms, when I hear things like, "We didn't budget for raises." So, when I think about our ability to give a raise, it's not unlike a household. So you can't just start the beginning of the year as a family and say, "We're gonna budget a raise." The raise comes from your boss, who gives you a raise. You don't budget for the raise. You hope and pray you get a raise. And then when you get it, you budget how you're gonna spend it. And if you get a raise, there's a good chance that you decide to put a little bit in savings in case the car breaks down, the air conditioner breaks down, the roof blows away. You want some savings. So let's say you absolutely, you know, you happen to get a raise and you say, "This year, I'm gonna put $1,000 in my savings account." For us, we can't give a raise unless we get a raise. And this year, we didn't really get a raise. We got money to pay for the salary increases for teachers that we got last year, plus a little extra. And the little extra, we're told exactly how it has to be spent. And it worked out to an embarrassing $25 if you are not an effective or highly effective teacher. And I don't know about the rest of you all, but I felt like it was almost better not to give the $25 than to insult somebody with $25. But even if we wanted to take that approach, we didn't have that option either because we were mandated exactly how it would be spent. I wanna back up a couple of years because this board, in spite of how little we are able to address the salary concerns, and they're legitimate, and they're real, and they're pressing at this point in time. They are pressing. We are the same board. We care as much about teachers as we did. There's five of us got elected two and a half years ago. The year before I got elected, the other three of you, you granted a 4% raise. That was, I think, the highest raise in the region, 4%, the year before I came in. Our first year with the five new members, we gave a 5.5, a 5.5% raise. Nobody gave a 5.5% raise. And we did it in a way that I am very uncomfortable with. And that was, we looked at the fund balance and said, okay, CTA wants us to use that fund balance. We'll use some of it to go from 4% to 5.5. And next year, let's cross our fingers and hope we get a raise from the state. Well, we got a raise from the state, but the state said, "You're not gonna use it the way you wanted to use it. We're gonna tell you that you're gonna bring every teacher up to 47.5. And if there's any money left over, the other teachers will get some of that." Nobody else in Orange County Public Schools but teachers got a raise. And that year, that raise for most of our teachers was unacceptable in my mind. The compression between our experienced teachers and our new teachers was shrunk to a level where you have 20-year teachers that are making a few thousand dollars more than a brand-new teachers? I mean, I sympathize and empathize with teachers who feel completely disrespected. What I'm frustrated with is, it's not that I'm taking it personally, but blaming the board for something that the state has to fix is like, if you can't identify the problem. If I'm sick and I go to a doctor and he says, "I think you have a headache," and he gives me aspirin, and in fact, "I have a brain tumor and I needed surgery." Treating the wrong problem, the problem with the wrong medicine is not working. Treating this problem by being upset with us isn't effective. We had this conversation a couple of years ago. And CTA and our, and a lot of our teachers got galvanized, got organized. Unfortunately, it didn't work because we constantly run into a brick wall in Tallahassee. So when we say we start from scratch, we don't start from scratch. We have to pay everybody what we paid them last year. We can't say, "Well, this employee, we're gonna pay them less than we did last year." We actually did start from scratch. If you remember, the year that we gave the 5.5% raise, the next year, we went through and went through every aspect of the budget, recognizing we might not get that extra 1.5%, which in fact, we didn't. So we would have to find ways to cut. You can cut once in a while. You can't cut every, every single year. And then, because we used our reserves, those reserves weren't there. This year, we have reserves. This year, Wes, to your point, we offered all of the reserves, all the excess reserves we could in the form of what I think amounted to a 3,500, it's a supplement, it's one-time. But if we make it salary, we have to have that money coming in next year. And we don't have it coming in next year. So if the state last year had said, instead of, "We're gonna bring everybody up to 47.5," if they'd have said, "Here's a chunk of money. Do what you need to do to do right by your teachers." And even if they said, "You have to use it only for teachers," we could have come up with a much, much more equitable scale for our teachers. And now, now the legislature's locked in. They've gotta give us that money year after year. And we are locked in with this compression, which is a slap in the face to experienced teachers who are mentoring the new teacher in the classroom next to them. We get it, every single member of this board was up in Tallahassee in everybody's office whose door we could push through on this point. And to tell you the truth, almost all of our delegation was 100% with us. We were just preaching to the choir, you know? Unfortunately, they're not the majority party. And therefore, their voices weren't heard either. So it is not a pretty picture in the state of Florida right now because education is extremely important. We are fighting as hard as we can. I feel like the teachers feel. I feel like CTA feels. I really do. I just think it's unfortunate that at the same time that we can't pay our employees what we wanna pay them, that they're also getting a message that it's because we just simply don't care. When we had the flexibility, we gave 9.5% in two years. We have the highest salaries. We have the highest benefits in this region. And they're not good enough, but they're still better than our peers. So we do care. And I would rather, I would like to get paid fairly and respected. But if you can't pay me enough, at least respect me. And we do, but we can't get that message through because we are constantly in a disconnect of communication. And I don't understand why it's so hard to grasp. I'm not trying to point fingers. It is reality. And if I don't, if I don't, if we don't speak the truth, we can't fix the problem. So your other ideas, Wes? And Ms. Feld, yeah, Laura, the cafeteria. I would like, I know you were working on a plan. I know we've done, made a lot of progress. I'm not asking for it right now. But especially in our elementary schools, how are we doing? If you could get back to, like, each board member with their schools, that would be really helpful. The testing, I don't know where that money would come from. If that could come from ESER, yeah. And I would love to see that if we have the ability. Dr. Jenkins, I know you are working with Dr. Pino to try to supplement his staff. And we're trying to do all that, by the way, with dollars that are not available to raises because we do not, and those are one-time funds. So that's okay, they're ESER funds. So all of those ideas are excellent ideas. We hear you. We, I cannot tell you how much, Laura, we appreciate having you here, okay? You get a little irritated with us once in a while, but that's okay. It's coming from a good place.
For hours.
Yeah, and you've been here for hours. And Wes, I cannot tell you how much we appreciate your support. If we had a whole community like the two of you, there's no telling what we could do. And the one other thing, and Eric, he's been coming every time, and John's coming to all of our meetings. And you all, it's, you're small in numbers. But hey, I was one aggravating person in the county commission once upon a time. I went on to become a commissioner and a mayor. And I think I've done all right. I was a pain in the side, wicked pain in the side, but well-intentioned. So I do wanna cover one other important thing. Okay, as a county commissioner, city council member, mayor of either one, every year when property values go up, you have a choice. You can keep your millage the same, you can raise your millage, or you can lower your millage. Every year, you have to report if the value of your taxes go up such that when you keep your millage the same, you actually take in much more money, you have to report that to your taxpayers. It's called the rollback equivalent, but you don't have to roll back. I think we only rolled back one time while I was in office, and it was a mandatory rollback. The rest of the time, we kept our millage the same. Our tax rate was the same. But if the value of the properties go up, then so does the money. This is the same thing Vice Chair was talking about. Every year, we got a raise. That meant every year, we could give a raise. School districts cannot do that. Every year, we are told what we can, what, almost every year, we've had to lower it and lower it. I think there's only one year in like the last five or six years where we didn't have to reduce it. So the legislature makes sure that we don't have extra money here locally. They have a rationale for it, having to do with everybody getting the same level of funding. But there's another way they could do that. They could let that go up, and then they could equalize it. But that is, I don't even think water management districts are forced to reduce their millage every year. At one point, they were forcing us to reduce our millage to the point where even if you had, say, a new apartment complex, hotels, maybe in a whole new theme park, and all that extra property tax that came in, you had to reduce your millage to make sure you didn't get any extra revenue. So very, very frustrating, a little complicated, but not over anybody in this room's head. So I thank you for indulging my venting. And I'm glad you're here as partners. Let's move on to Member Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a couple of questions. So currently, we're at the enrollment that we ended last year at. And our projection was, I believe, 204,000, 204,857.
Correct.
If we don't reach, so we're basically short almost 5,000 students. What will be the hit, the budget if we, if we don't, if those students don't come to Orange County Public Schools?
Well, just real rough high level. If we were short 4,000 students, it would be about $31 million.
So that'd be an extra $31 million that will take a hit. You'll have to find somewhere in the budget. The Family Empowerment Scholarship, that's been going on for three years. The number that's, I think it's on Slide 29. The, I know it's 25.7 million. When we look at the family scholarships, does that start over every year? Because I think we've, historically, over the last three years since Family Empowerment has begun, have roughly lost about 31, 3,500 students each year. Or that's what's always been in the budget. Is that a rolling number? Or do you start over at the beginning of each year? My question is this, are we using, are we losing 3,500 students each school year? Yes.
Well, it's 39.97 now. Last year was less than that. The year before, it was less than that. I don't have the exact enrollment numbers for FES right now, but...
But so, I just want everybody to understand. So if we added all those numbers together, we're looking at, and roughly, nobody quote me on this, we're probably looking at 12,000 students that we've lost in the last three years to the Family Empowerment Scholarship. Roughly. Because it's been about 3,000 a year, and it's been three years. So at like 25 point, 25 million a year, we're looking at about $75 million potentially, hypothetically, that we could have lost over the last three years due to, due to the family empowerment. So I just wanna make that, I mean, when you start looking, you're looking at a year, but when you add it up for three years, that's $75 million that we've lost. So maybe it might behoove us to, do we do exit interviews? Can we find out why kids are leaving OCPS? That might just be something to look into. And then, I agree with, I agree with pretty much all of my colleagues up here on the dais. This is really tough. It is insulting to offer 25 cents. It's extremely insulting.
It's $25, it's not quite...
I mean, $25.
But it is for the whole year.
It's for the whole year, so really, yeah. So it's, it is, that's insulting. And I don't disagree with that. I know that we've had discussions at the dais, and I don't know if our plan was to workshop it or to discuss it of what we're going to do, but we did have a conversation about looking at the language for the millage. I know that, that we need more money, and it's been discussed from the legislature. But in lieu of that, we're gonna have to start thinking outside the box and get creative on what we need to do for our community because cost of living is out of control. So I don't know if that's something that we're still looking at. I think it would, it would behoove us to have a workshop, to look at that language, to see how we can incorporate it. Other counties, Palm Beach County, I believe, maybe even Miami-Dade, have built in teacher raises into their millage, and so they pay them through that. So when we get emails and like, "Well, Miami-Dade did this," or "Palm Beach County did that," that's funded through their millage. So it's independent of what the legislature's doing. So maybe that's something we need to look at to see if we can do because it is a priority of this board to pay teachers. Living salary. And the compression and what happened, it really did impact our most veteran teachers.
If I could just clarify, clarify one thing.
Absolutely.
Our special millage is 9% of our operating budget. So if you were going to designate the special millage for a particular purpose, you would have to reduce elsewhere.
Right, so maybe, it would be at least worth a workshop. I understand what you're saying. And we don't, I'm not saying we need to defund something to fund something else, but I think it would be, we've looked through the entire budget, as Chair Jacob says. I think it might be, it might behoove us just to kind of do a deep dive into this millage to see what's going on, to see if there's any room to play with so that we can fund teachers. I mean, I think that that would be worth our time, and I think our teachers deserve that. I think all of our staff, our classified staff, all of our employees deserve that. And then I wanted to talk about, I know that Chair Jacob's already talked to Dr. Jenkins about some of the questions with the cafeteria, and she's gonna get back to us on that. That's great. School compliance officer? That would be fabulous. And I know that the DOH has been trying extremely hard to get more employees. So maybe just an update on what that looks like. The ESER funds. So I just wanna understand this in my mind. Because Wes brought this up, so I wanna make sure that I understand it. We, there's been four, there was four ESER funds given out, right? Three? Three.
Three.
Okay, so the first two have kind of all been divvied out.
I don't believe we've gotten all the, I'm not the ESER expert, but I do not believe we've gotten all the funds from ESER too.
We haven't?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
Before we go down that pathway, ESER is separate from your operating budget. That's your next school, school board meeting strategic... That's your next school, school board meeting strategic plan update.
Okay.
All of that will be covered next board meeting.
Okay, awesome. That'd be great, because we're getting a lot, like, we're, we're asking the state to release some funds, and I'm just trying to understand, what does the state need to release? Because federally, they still have a portion of our dollars that the state hasn't even tried to draw down on. So just some clarification so that I can understand, that would be great, but we'll deal with that next time.
Work session.
And then just, just finally, I want to say that I was just at FBS, or FSBA Legislative Meeting, which I'll give a brief overview at the end, and it was districts across the state, we're all having this problem, we're all having these conversations on how do we make sure that our classified staff are paid well? How do we make sure that our teachers are paid well? How do we include pre-K teachers? We even talked about, can we kind of redefine in statute what classroom teachers defined as, because all the other entities keep getting left out? Like, we're, we're looking at all areas where we see deficiencies. So it's an issue that we're all trying to tackle and looking at, and I think, you know, with numbers come power. So if we all just keep having this conversation, maybe we'll make a dent in this, in this process. But, so that, that's it. I, I agree. I, I mean, it's, I don't know what more I can say that haven't been said, but I just, I agree with everybody in the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
So there's something I want to make clear. I am never against a parent's choice to choose where they want to send their child to school. And I don't think most of us on this board, if any of us, are against that. Where, when we're talking about those dollars, especially the Family Empowerment Scholarship and things like that, private schools have the ability, because they are most times not-for-profit, not always, they're either for-profit or not-for-profit, have other revenue resources that we do not necessarily have, whether it be philanthropy, the way that they organize their alumni organizations. There's, there's just, it's just a different model. And when you're robbing, when you talk about parent rights, when you're robbing tax dollars to invest in private entity, which by the way, if you look historically, has not worked well in military housing, in prisons, in a lot of different models where that has actually been done in other industries, because the taxpayer loses sight of where those dollars are truly invested. So it sounds great, it sounds like Mecca, when you hear about these fabulous scholarships. There's always been scholarships available to students that might not be able to afford a particular school. The difference is, instead of adding that choice for parents, they're taking away from somewhere else and adding it. So I just wanted to be clear on that, because we as parents have a right to send our children anywhere we want to school, wherever we think school is best for them. The question is, should it defund something else in order to fund something that's not, no longer in the sunshine? So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are ready for a resolution and a motion. Member Colbert.
Thank you, Chair. We'll begin with the millage. I'll read the resolution and then move to adopt the millage as read in the resolution. Whereas, Section 200.065 Florida statutes requires that the school board adopt a total millage to support the final budget and notify the property appraiser of its action. And whereas, the 2021-2022 final budget is based upon a total millage of 6.737 mils, which is less than the rollback rate by 1.31%, as computed pursuant to Section 200.065 Florida statutes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, that the board does hereby adopt the following total millage to support the final budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Required local effort: 3.489 mils. Basic discretionary: .748 mils. Additional voted: 1.0 mils. Capital improvement: 1.5 mils, for a total of 6.737 mils. Be it further resolved that the superintendent immediately inform the Orange County Property Appraiser of the action of the school board in the manner prescribed by law. I will now move that we adopt the millage as prescribed in the resolution.
Member, motion by Member Colbert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Gould. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Dr. Jenkins? Anything further?
We have to adopt the budget.
Go to.
Oh, no, I was just checking to. The budget, all right. And we have no further public comments. So, Member Colbert, are you prepared to read the resolution and the budget?
I am, Chair. The resolution for the budget will be to approve the 2021-2022 budget for the general fund in the amount of $2,290,94,240. Approve the 2021-2022 budget for the special revenue fund in the amount of $236,856,988. Approve the 2021-2022 budget for the debt service fund in the amount of $233,410,469. Approve the 2021-2022 budget for the capital projects fund in the amount of $2,119,29,845. And finally, approve the 2021-2022 budget for the internal service fund in the amount I move that we approve the budget as stated in the resolution.
Motion by Member Colbert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kestrel Dennel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Member Kestrel Dennel. Before we take up the consent agenda, we did have one public comment, one member of the public on the line, or can we check if they're still there?
We actually have two. One had dropped off, we called her back, or him back, and so we have two on item 10.01, or 10.1.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and take those comments at this time? All right, that's a call to whoever the mystery person in the back needs to put our callers through. There we go, I hear.
Renate.
All right, this is not seeming very good. Victor, are you back there? Can you put our two callers through, one at a time, please? Amy, do you have a person you can call?
Hi.
Ms. Enville, I'm sorry.
I think they're working, but yes.
Well, while we're waiting, I do want to put one statement into the record that I, I made a statement earlier, when Mr. Bu was here, I wish he was still here, but I wanted, I want to be clear that when I mentioned what I anticipated would happen in terms of my vote, if the Supreme Court ultimately determines after hearing potentially all six cases, that the rules stand, I made a comment about how I thought I would vote, and I did want to be clear that that was not a reflection of what this board would do. I'm not quite sure of my exact words, but I always want to be mindful of the fact that this board is eight individual people with their own decisions to make. So if there was any lack of clarity, I wanted to clear that up. Don't have perfect, perfect memory, but I do want to make sure that that's on the record. Thank you. If we have our speakers, our callers?
They're still working on it.
Chair Jacob's your first caller, it's Kyla Murphy.
Ms. Murphy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. We're on the.
This is Kyla Murphy, Orlando.
Go ahead, I'm so sorry.
I was going to say, Kyla Murphy, Orlando, Florida, 32837.
Go ahead, Kyla.
And I was going to speak about the item 10.1, the request for approval of revisions to the special programs and procedures for 2020, 2021. And I just wanted to say, my son's teacher, my oldest son's teacher, who's a general education teacher, wears many hats. She embodies inclusion in her classroom every day. My youngest son's ESE teacher wears many hats and should be supported, assistive technology, general education teacher, ESE teacher, while teaching multiple grade levels in the classroom. So I know when we're speaking about teachers, I want to be clear that ESE teachers really, and general education teachers who support our ESE students, really should be recognized and a paraprofessional. But regarding the 10.1, there were some things that I noted, that I had some concerns about, regarding mechanical restraint and the language saying a student that is too strong or too large. I would like to know if you guys have an understanding of what the definition of too large and too strong is for a student. Roughly 47% of restraints are K, pre-K through third. The other 40% is third through eighth grade, and about 70% is nine through 12. So I'm just trying to figure out how pre-K through third, being the largest percentage of students that are restrained, would qualify as too large or too strong. Also saying that mechanical restraints don't impede on a student's breathing. Certainly a straitjacket slash mat wrap, which is a, an entire body straitjacket would impede on a student's breathing if used improperly. And my understanding would be, if it would be an imminent threat to themselves or others, that is when restraint should be used, to protect the safety of the student and the safety of others. I don't think the district has a sound understanding of when that should be utilized. Another note, something that I noted in there is the referencing of the district provides training throughout the year and has regularly scheduled office hours to support schools with MTSS. I sat in my children's school meeting and asked about MTSS and was told that they didn't think MTSS applied to ESE students. So it's kind of mind-blowing to me that it's even referenced in this, because the MTSS coaches and the MTSS process is, especially for children in self-contained units, is usually never utilized, because the MTSS coaches do not think it applies to children with IEPs. So I would love for the board to pull numbers, to see the number of students that are in units, or the number of students that are under an ASC diagnosis or an IND diagnosis that are supported through the MTSS process with MTSS coaches. The next thing I noticed, it said the language for IEP team was changed to IEP team meeting with the parent. That is what is guiding us into the place we are at as ESE parents. We're referred to by the district, us versus them, constantly. We are a part of the IEP team. You don't introduce the football team and say the coach, and here's the team. They're all a part of the team. So I don't agree with that language, and I would trust that you guys would take careful consideration before approving this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. Member Lopez?
You have one more speaker, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Want to respond?
I just have a quick question. Since this is on, I guess it's a procedural question, since this is on consent, and Mrs. Murphy's raised some questions that probably should be answered, can they be answered while it's on consent, or does it need to be removed from consent to discuss?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to.
They can be answered, they don't have to be moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll take it while it's on consent? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that question. All right, let's take the next caller, and then we'll ask staff for answers to some of those questions. Next caller.
Your next caller is Lucy Okendo, and I apologize if I mispronounced that.
No, you're good, thank you. Again, my name is Lucy Okendo, 10917 Tangora Street, Orlando, 32825. And I'm also commenting on the same agenda item. So while my child doesn't attend a special day school, as Martin Luther King stated, "In justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Whatever affects one directly affects us all indirectly. So as a parent and an ally for students with disabilities, in OCPS, I'm deeply concerned with the changes made in this agenda item. So right now, it says here that OCPS currently allows the use of mechanical restraints only at special day schools, and it's supposed to be used as a last resort with a small number of students with a physical restraint is not feasible. So when the use of seclusion was removed in 2011, how did the district go from 497 incidents of seclusion to zero in one year? And why can't we use these same measures to be put in place for mechanical restraints? OCPS is the leader in restraints with over 700 restraints. We have more than Palm Beach, Broward, and Miami-Dade combined. I would really like to know what is the action plan to reduce these numbers? We've been basically saying the same thing for the last 10 years. I understand that the need for restraints, when a child is an imminent threat to themselves or others, why is it, why did you guys change it now to if a child is too large or strong? And again, who will be making this determination? Can I use my time?
Oh, thank you so much. Great questions. Can we get staff to go ahead and answer those questions? I know, I am sure the whole board shares the concern that we have about the use of restraints, and they should only be done to protect the child from injuring themselves and under most extreme circumstances.
Susan Abbey is actually going to provide a response to the board.
Wonderful. And Ms. Abbey also spent a lot of time, I'm sure she did with each of you, over the last week or so, spent a lot of time explaining to me what they are doing moving forward, the efforts that they're undertaking to evaluate what else they can do better, looking at best practices in some of these other jurisdictions. So I'm glad to see that there's a focus on this, but I think some of the questions definitely need to be answered. Thank you. Ms. Abbey, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. So I'll try and answer some of the questions, but I also have some of my staff with me tonight, so I might pivot to them, because they have some really deep knowledge about some of those questions that were being asked. So one of the first questions that came up was about mechanical restraints. And just for clarity, we do do mechanical restraints, but only at our day school, so only Magnolia. And I believe the last time a mechanical restraint was done was in October 2020. And I understand that there's about less, less than five kids right now that have that as something that's written into a behavior plan. So.
So one of the questions, though, also was that, I wish I had Ms. Murphy on the phone, and maybe you remember, having to do with the size. Why is the size as opposed to the risk to self? And why would a pre-K, a third grader, present a size issue that would require mechanical constraints?
So yes, and then I would ask one of our behavior analysts to come up. We've got Kimba Smith here that can speak to that specifically.
Hi. Where do I talk here? I'm Kimba Smith, I'm one of the behavior analysts in the district. I primarily work in the east. And the question was about the ages, pre-K to third?
Yes.
I believe we don't use mechanical restraint for our kids that are younger. The mechanical restraint that we use is out at Magnolia. Magnolia does not have any elementary students.
So Ms. Murphy has some data that, I'm trying to remember the exact numbers, I thought she said that she, she referenced a percentage of our restraints that were used, and they were, it was a fairly decent percent used for pre-K through third, third through eighth, and then I think 70% was above that. So that would suggest 30% was in the pre-K through eighth.
Yeah, I think she said the highest number of restraint was pre-K to three, but that is not mechanical. There's two different, there are two different areas. The mechanical restraint they're referring to is what one of the callers said, the wrap mat, and that is used at our separate day school, and that is used with less than, I think five of the students have that on their behavior intervention plan, and it hasn't been used since October 2020. We would like to fade the use of those out.
And what age has that been used on?
The, the students that we use out at Magnolia are middle and high, but they are fully grown men.
No pre-K through third graders?
No pre-K through third. I'm talking about like several hundred-pound students that are 21 years old, and the typical restraint when they're in crisis is usually like a vertical hold, and it cannot be done safely without someone getting injured.
I don't have a perfect memory, but that's what I thought. I understood that she was referring to mechanical restraints for those young of children, which, okay. Other questions? Member Lopez, do you remember the other questions on restraints before we? I'm sorry, Member Gallo. I understood that she was referring to mechanical restraints for those young of children, which, okay. Other questions? Member Lopez, do you remember the other questions on restraints before we? I'm sorry, Member Gallo.
No, I think it was just that she was pointing, the restraints that they were listing were the restraints overall as a district, the right. She wasn't really specific to mechanical restraints, but I think it was just the size and then the definition. And then the other thing that she was the parent portion of the IEP, why was the parent? And I did share some information with Ms. Abbey early, so I'm sure she'll address some of.
Go ahead. Ms. Abbey?
So as far as the other questions that came up tonight, she talked, a couple, one of the callers talked about the MTSS process. And we do have that in place. And if for that particular parent, we can check in with that school to find out what process they're following for the self-contained ESE classroom. But we do have supports in place for MTSS and it is for all students that require that. There was also another comment about the IEP team and the addition of the language and parent. We actually have been speaking at that the IEP team does include the parent. We've had lots of conversations about that. But in the revision process, the state provides questions to districts to answer when they're making their revisions. And in that particular case, they asked us to add in the word parent just to make sure that it was clear, parents are a part of the IEP team. So that was not our point of putting that in there. That was something the state asked us to include.
Thank you for that clarification.
And then I think they were asking too, some questions about just really, what are we doing when it comes to reducing our restraints? And we're putting a lot of work into this because we see the need to for a couple of different things. We know we need to increase training and understanding about how to de-escalate behaviors. So it's not just jumping into the opportunity to restrain a child. It's really about what are the triggers that are happening that are causing it and having those early warning signs that people are aware of and then getting help immediately. And so we want to do more training on actually de-escalating the situation before it becomes to a point where a student is about to harm themselves or harm somebody else than would require restraint. So we're doing lots more training. We're also looking, but training more on not the actual how to restrain, but actually on how to de-escalate those types of strategies. We're also going to look at other districts because we do see numbers different in other districts. So we are going to be studying some of the things that they're doing. And then we also have an extensive process for when a restraint happens. We have a very clear process that we follow as far as notification to parents. We have a team that takes a look at it that day to determine all those things that took place, what happened right before, what happened during, what happened after. The team comes together to determine if there are revisions that need to be made to the behavior plan. We need to look at the setting of where the student is. We have our directors and our analysts review everything that took place with the restraint. So it's very systematic and there's a process behind every single restraint that happens. And typically there are no two restraints that are the same or what caused it. Every restraint is so unique and different based on the unique needs of the kids.
And efforts moving forward in terms of looking at what other districts are doing that we're being compared against?
Yeah, so Dr. Gazuntite is actually going to be going to visit with one of our behavior analysts. He's going to be going down south to two or three districts down south and then up to Hillsborough and to, well, down south it'll be Miami, Broward, and Palm Beach. And Pinellas, thank you.
All right, thank you. Member, I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm doing that today.
Thank you.
Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the team for the work that they did. We've had, I've had many conversations about the restraints and others with the ESE team. And I think we all know that we recognize that we could do better, that we have a problem. I think it's a priority. I know that Dr. Jenkins has made it a priority for her staff and I'm encouraged for what we're going to accomplish. And I think that together with the collaboration with the parents, because sometimes what we're doing here at the district doesn't always, we've seen it a lot of times, doesn't always make its way down to the schools. So I just think that, you know, we have some work to be done, but I'm encouraged by what we're doing and as long as we keep the lines of communication open and we continue to work together, I feel confident that we're going to get to where we need to be.
Thank you, Member Gallo. And I want you to know, you certainly have my support. I think the whole board is in agreement that this is a very significant priority to all of us. And I was especially pleased though to hear from Ms. Murphy about both of her children's teachers this year. So I'll probably try to reach out to her and find out who those teachers are because, you know, I know it's not the same as a raise, but I still think being recognized and appreciated matters and we need to make sure that our really exceptional teachers hear from us. So, okay. Then we can take action on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Member Byrd. Motion moved it. Is there a second?
A second.
Member Kesterdental? She gave me the two fingers down here. Member Kesterdental seconded it. All in favor? Please say aye. I don't know if this is like a hippie thing or I don't know what this was. James Bond? I'm not quite sure. All these generational things going on in my head. All in favor? Did we all?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we double voted. And Dr. J, or Dr., Ms. Enval, do you have a general counsel report?
I have two things for you. The first is to request an executive session. And so here we go. Pursuant to Section 286.011 Subsection 8 Florida statutes and in accordance with Board Policy BEC, an entity may meet in private with its attorney to discuss pending litigation to which the entity is presently a party before a court or administrative agency, provided certain conditions are met, including the requirement that a transcript of the executive session will be made part of the public record upon conclusion of the litigation. In this case, I am requesting the school board's advice concerning pending litigation styled as HL, a minor, by and through his parent and natural guardian, Kevin Colado, versus Orange County School Board in case number 2019-CA-9933-0 on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 12 o'clock PM. The executive session will be closed meeting held in Conference Room E at the RBLLC, RBELC, and will take approximately one hour. And this is right before your work session on the 21st. A notice has been drafted for posting. Those in attendance will be Teresa Jacob's chair, Pam Gold, vice chair, Angie Gallo, school board member, Johanna Lopez, school board member, Linda Cobert, school board member, Vicki Elaine Felder, school board member, Karen Castredentl, school board member, Melissa Byrd, school board member, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, superintendent, Amy Enval, school board general counsel, John Palmerini, deputy general counsel, Dan Dill, outside counsel, and a court reporter. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that.
Thank you.
And the other thing I have, Mr. Palmerini wants to give you just a quick update on a pleading that was just filed in our rule challenge case. We're not going to discuss the, you know, the intricacies of the case, just an update. Mr. Palmerini, you recognize her?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And want is a relative term here. I just retweeted. The Department of Health has filed a motion to dismiss today for our rule challenge. And they have also filed a motion to dismiss the NAACP out of the case and the students and parents who the NAACP is also bringing their action on behalf of. I'm sure this will come as a surprise to you after all of my presentations. They are alleging all of us, the school boards, the NAACP, and the parents and students lack standing to bring a claim. They claim with respect to the parents and the students that their injury claims are speculative. They claim with respect to the NAACP that the NAACP's associational interests aren't covered by the rule at issue. And they claim with us that we have a responsibility to follow the law until such time as it is ruled invalid. So those are the arguments. They have asked DOA, the DOA judge, to require us, this came in at 4:54 this afternoon. They've asked us to respond in 24 hours. They want to expedite this as quickly as possible, the rule on these motions to dismiss. So that is the update. Just wanted to let you all know.
All right, thank you.
And by the way, with all the Knights talk, I have to say, go Gators.
Okay. Let's, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, with the approval of your consent agenda, I am pleased to announce all 10 of your school board medical advisory committee members were reinstated for another year thanks to Dr. Ajai, Dr. Khadijah, Dr. Harris, Dr. Shu, Dr. Mansfield, Dr. Muzinski, Dr. Nielsen, Dr., I'm sorry, Nurse Ravendall, Dr. Rodriguez, and Dr. Schwartz for agreeing to serve for another year focusing on the pandemic and providing advisory capacity to the school board.
Thank you. In terms of committee reports, I know we have a legislative report, I believe, from Ms. Gallo? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, this is you, Member Gallo. I was going to say, let me hear from Member Gallo first. She's queued up.
Thank you. So we did just approve our legislative priorities for the federal and the state today. Those were shared with FSBA. We had an FSBA legislative meeting yesterday and we did come up with our top three priorities. Staff are now going through those and vetting those because we went into the weeds on a few things, but I think everybody will be pleased. Two of the priorities that are on our list made it on their list. So I'm especially excited about that. And as I mentioned, there was a lot of talk about teacher disparity, pay disparity amongst and the compression and what that's doing across the state. And funding obviously was a big topic of conversation yesterday at the FSBA. So I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to mention that a speaker was talking about the cleanliness of our bathrooms. And apparently there is, there's a, something going viral on social media on like TikTok and on Snapchat and whatnot where I don't know if kids are being encouraged or what is happening, but kids are literally stuffing toilets and ripping down soap machines, soap dispensers. It's happening in all of our high schools.
Oh, my gosh.
And principals are trying, are working diligently to try to get it under control. But if they're reading this about social media that our bathrooms aren't clean, it's literally because our bathrooms are being destroyed and we're trying to get, trying to get a handle on it. And I only know this because I texted my principal because I'm at East River. I've been there a lot. And let me just tell you, our bathrooms are spotless. So when I heard someone mention East River and our bathrooms, I was like, wait, what? No, that can't be happening. So I did, and she just said, yeah, there's something that's going on on social media and they're trying to get a handle on it. So I just wanted to share that with the public that this is an issue. It's not that we're not cleaning our bathrooms.
Can I follow up this question with you on that? Is somebody then taking pictures and posting what they look like or how is this word getting around on social media to?
I know that it's being shared on social media. I didn't ask for the specifics. I'm sure that we can get Dr. Border to look into it and give us the specifics, but it's like a social media campaign that's going on and, you know, we really.
It's kind of like, yeah, yell fire in the movie theater kind of thing, create the problem and, yeah, okay. I'm glad you shared that with us because I was kind of, I was taken back. I believe that, you know, while Mr. Miron and I don't always agree on things, I respect him and I think he would not come here and tell us something that he didn't believe to be true. So that's why I asked for the list so that we could follow up. We'll still follow up as soon as we get that list, obviously, but yeah, thank you.
That could be contributed into the issues.
Vice Chair.
Okay, well, another thing. So, not that I want to talk about this again tonight, but I was, I have been, you know, watching the trends and I wanted to point out that the latest COVID trends are down from 19% to I think just over 12% in the county. We need them to go lower, obviously, but that is working. The other thing that I think is worth pointing out, while it's not exactly in the governor's rule, when I listen to him talk about the rule about the masks, he wants us to be surgical about it or deliberate about it. And I think that our decision after very long discussion was really based on what we were seeing in the community of the rise of infections. And that falls in the spirit of the intent because we did put a time limit on it. And I know that not everybody sees it that way, but this was not a willy-nilly rule that we just said, oh, no, everybody's going to wear masks all the time. And in fact, if I recall our discussion correctly, most of us wanted to be able to use that mask mandate very judiciously and even take it to the school level and the neighborhood level when we saw upticks in the numbers, which is where we started really talking about how can we help enhance contact tracing? And I've been following up with the superintendent about that just to see, you know, how many people have been applying and are in the pipeline to help with the Health Department with contact tracing. But I just think it's, as people come with a prescribed notion on our intent, that it's important to just kind of clear the air a little bit here and there on what we're really trying to accomplish was, which is keep schools open. And in our elected role, our duty is to watch out for the public health within our buildings. And when we have to have every student and every teacher in the building during the same time all day, we can't split, we can't have the parents choose a launch ad version, et cetera. You know, it begins to diminish the options we have in our toolbox. When data is delayed, it diminishes the options we have in our toolbox to be able to react as quickly as possible in real time. So I thought that was worth just pointing out. I, in my head, don't see that we are breaking the law. That's in my head. I see that we are doing what he described we should do, which is respond at the local level without being broad brush. I think the last thing that I would like to point out from a data perspective is that when we did implement our opt option policy, that we had between 93 and 92%, it was like 92 and a half percent that made the choice to send their children to school in a mask. So when we had much of our community concerned about the spread, masks are not the be all, end all. Actually, in my opinion, the be all, end all would be great contact tracing. So, and vaccination, obviously. And we're not quite there yet on the pediatric side. So in the meantime, it's really trying to manage it. But I just felt that especially since we're continuing to have this roller coaster of emails and people stepping forward that, while I don't want to get in a debate one-on-one because that's just not going to work, I wanted to share what my perspective is on the why that we collectively made that decision and why I personally supported it for the health and wellbeing of our children.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Well said. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for that, Member Gold, because I think that's exactly how we all feel. So I appreciate you actually putting that into words. There's been some good news today that we haven't discussed. There was some actual good news today and that was the announcement by Governor DeSantis that he'll be removing the FSA beginning next school year and replacing it with some progress monitoring. So shout out to that. We don't know what that looks like. I'm sure that we'll be getting an in-depth report as soon as Dr. Jenkins and her team figures out what that means for us and the parents. But I know that I received some text messages from parents and they're all excited about that news. And I know I'm personally excited about the news because it appears to what we'll be going towards is more, is what we've been asking for, right? It's more of a device or a system that will inform and guide instruction. I'm hoping that the reports will be easily readable, easily digestible, not only by our teachers, but by our parents. You shouldn't have to have a statistics degree to read data on how well your child is or isn't doing. So I'm personally really excited and I think this is, this is the chance to kind of shake up the accountability system and do something really, really great and unique here in the state of Florida. So I just wanted, in case people weren't aware, that that happened today and I'm personally very pleased for it.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for reminding us. Member Castredal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And while Member Gallo sees the FSA announcement as somewhat positive, I, forgive me for being skeptical. On the surface, it does sound very positive, but I know a lot of parents and teachers were never really concerned about a test as much as they were about the high stakes that were attached to those tests. And I have not heard yet if they plan to remove those stakes from that progress monitoring, which, will the teachers still be evaluated based on those scores? Or will schools still get their grades? And will students still be held back because of their grades or their score? So I know that the governor said that there are details that they're going to put into a bill, and I think we need to be very watchful as to how that bill is constructed and that it's, we're not just shifting the end-of-the-year testing to year-long testing. So I cross my fingers, but also be involved and observant, and that I have some other comments to make. I'm so glad that our MAC members all agreed to continue serving their community by being on this board. And I hope that we can use their services soon to possibly have a discussion about vaccinations of students or vaccinations in general. There is still so much misinformation and hesitation. And I think that a discussion with them could be beneficial, not just to us and our decisions, but the public. And I wonder if we could also be doing more as far as educating our students about COVID and vaccines as well. Just like when students would learn about smoking and take that information home to their parents, we could be doing something similar to help get trusted information out from our MAC committee. Also, I know that the parents who come and speak fervently about our mask policy, I know that their intent is to look out for their children. And I know their concerns are genuine, and I really, I do listen. I know we all do. We do weigh the concerns that they have with what's happening. And it isn't just about wearing a mask, but what the mask can actually prevent. And that, I don't want them to think that we're not hearing them. We do hear them. But we are also weighing that information with other information that's presented. And I thought it was really interesting today, when we had a speaker speak about ventilation, and both sides had their thumbs up. And I thought, whoa, there's something that we all agree on. But like Dr. Jacob, Dr. Jenkins mentioned, we invested our resources last year to upgrade all of our ventilations in all of our schools, portables in every classroom. And so we are working on, I mean, we've already put that in place, and it's going to continue. We're going to continue to change out the filters. So I want everyone to know that we also understand how important that is. I also noticed both sides had their thumbs up when we talked about having kids eat outdoors or have classroom or instruction outdoors. I don't think anyone can be against that. And then when we find such unity, I think we should take advantage of that and promote that, those ideas. And I know that I have received a number of communications from parents saying that they've, they've kind of run into roadblocks at their elementary schools when it comes to eating outdoors. And I don't know, you know, I know that there are different reasons why. It might be staffing. They may not have someone that can watch the kids. But I know other parents have offered to volunteer in different ways. I don't know if there's a way to have parents volunteer to be inside the cafeteria while an employee is also outside. Different ways that we can balance those resources. And then just letting kids go outside more often. If it's not raining, like Ms. Vale said, that it's beautiful Florida, we should be able to use that, take advantage of that. So I know that we will get past this. I was just so overwhelmed when I saw people in agreement, and it reminded me of earlier times. And I'm reminded, we will get past this, and we will get through this together. And I appreciate you all coming out to help us. Thank you.
Member Castredal, I'm so glad you reminded, I noticed it too, and it's, and I had this moment of kind of relief, that there were things that we all agree on. And so I'm glad you brought us back to that positive place, which is kind of where I started with our moment of silence and my hope that when this is all over, there will be things we will look back and say, we've grown better, and somehow we've grown together. And it doesn't sometimes feel like that, but I hope that we can figure that out together as a community. I, I wanted to just comment very, very quickly. Member, Vice Chair Gold had brought up the, the issue of there only being 90, what, 92, 93%. One of the things that did concern me was when I looked at it, school by school, we still had some schools with a very, very high percentage. And you mentioned the two things, better quarantining and contact tracing. And the other thing, and this is, I think, what Wes brought up, and I'm not suggesting that we would ever test children without their parents' permission. That's never going to happen. But to have more testing available for our children, because we're only contact tracing when we know of a positive case, and it concerns me that there may be a lot of cases that we're missing. I feel much better seeing it come down. Like you said, I'm like, every day, I'm bugging Scott, do you know the latest numbers? Because I wanted to come down. I want to get back to that level where those children who wanted to wear masks wore them, where we all relaxed a little, where we didn't have breakthrough cases, where my friend's 32-year-old son, who's been on a ventilator for 25 days now, yeah, 32 years old and healthy. When I see things like that, I'm still, you know, I still am haunted by the fact that this is very real. A couple, a neighbor's mother just died, another neighbor hospitalized for an extended period of time. I'm just seeing it all around me. I want to see those numbers come down. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I'm really, really relieved. If you look at other places, you know, ahead of us, they have had a sudden, dramatic drop. But I do think that testing would be so helpful if we could avail ourselves to that, so we'd have a better indicator of what's going on school by school, especially if, at some point, we want to look at a surgical approach. That would be extremely helpful to have that. Okay. We need quarantine transparency. Got it, Ms. Vale? I agree with you on that. I agree with you on that. I don't think, I will say, I don't defend a lot of people. I don't think that Dr. Pino is trying to hide anything. I really believe in him. I think there are limited resources, and I'm very frustrated because we can't have social distancing, because we can't have launch ed, and we don't have a good handle on the quarantining, because there's not enough resources for that. And there are S R dollars that could be pulled down from the federal government, and we could be doing better here in Orange County and elsewhere across the state if we could utilize all those dollars now, galvanize all of our efforts here and now. That's what we need to be doing, in my opinion. And let me go to Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, just a great news and a concern, but I'm going to start with a good news. I went to the Lake Nona Homecoming Parade on Saturday, and it was very organized. It was huge. I remember the first one, when we have the first one, but this one, it was very organized, and it was very supported by the, by the community. So I saw Dr. Vasquez there as well, supporting the crowd. And I just want to congratulate the principal, Ms. Chang, and also Ms. Harris and Ms. Grimm, because they were in charge of organizing all the floats and the groups and the ad leads. So it was pretty, pretty cool. I really enjoyed it. So I just want to say that in a positive note. But I also have a concern, and I would like to talk about undocumented parents that are having obstacles to enroll their children. For example, they were saying that when they tried to make the appointment, they have to wait for more than 20 days. And they're coming from Latin America, and they're here to work. So it's very hard for them to work, and their children just waiting 20 days. And sometimes they need translators, so it's very difficult for them, because they, sometimes they don't speak Spanish. They have indigenous people that know Spanish and translate them when they go to the office. And when they go to the office, they say, no, the appointment is not for today. We don't have anything here. But the leaders that are helping them, they have proof that they make the appointment, but they still don't know why they're having that type of problem. Another situation is that when they provide the least proof, remember, they don't know that they are homeless, because they're living with other families. So they are trying to provide the least in the place that they are living. So it's like a second lease under the owner of the property. So the office is asking for the owner of the, of the property to provide that lease, but they don't know that they're homeless. So I think that maybe educating the community and also educating the office to understand the undocumented families, our farmers, that are the majority of them having this type of situation, because most of the time, they have this conversation. I had this conversation when I was driving. That's why I couldn't speak with Dr. Jenkins, that I always try to approach this type of situation. But I think that we all have to know about this, so we can advocate for them. I think that they have to know, you know, this is homeless. You know, you're homeless because you're living with this amount of families, and you don't have to provide this. And also speak with the student enrollment office. I think that we are facing this type of situation more on the Apocca side. That's, I'm very glad, because I know Ms. Bird is very, you know, very assertive with this type of situation, and I know that she has conversation with, in the whole community center. So, you know, I know they're very thankful, because you're, you know, you're trying to help as well. So I don't know, I think that maybe providing a town hall in Spanish to them, in a safe place, and also having a representative from the student enrollment office that speaks Spanish, so they can answer all the questions. It will be, you know, easier for them. So it's just that concern. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that, I think there should be some simple solutions. For instance, if they can identify the parent, that the family they're living with, and then if the landlord confirms that family is living there, then we don't necessarily have to kind of out the whole family for having another family living there. So I'm sure Dr. Jenkins will be able to figure out a solution for that that works. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have several indicators. In fact, there's a contact person at each school that's supposed to be able to help identify families that are probably struggling with homelessness and may not be aware of it. So it could be a language barrier. Certainly, Dr. Vasquez will make sure that's looked into, if you just give her the particular information. In the Apocca area, and certainly, remember, Bird is aware of this, in the Apocca area, we have lots of our migrant families, and so those schools in general are usually familiar with those issues that they're dealing with. So I'm going to need some specifics. And then I think we can look into, I thought we had someone in student enrollment who could interpret. If not, we can look into that as well. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Lopez. Member Gallo.
I'm sorry.
Bringing it home.
Yes, I will. And I'm sorry. I just wanted, when we were talking about the budget, we did mention about the Family Empowerment scholarships. And in speaking with Dr. Vasquez, we think that they have to apply every year, so that could be kind of a rolling number. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that that number may not be as high as I was thinking. So I just wanted to throw that out there, just so that everybody could be aware. And then the second thing is, the dashboard has changed a little bit, because I looked today, and now when you look on the dashboard, you can actually pull all elementary, all middle, all different categories out. And maybe that's been there this week, but I just spotted it today. So that's great news that Dr. Jenkins and her team has done for our dashboard. And to Member Gold's point, when we get to a place where we can even be more strategical than we're already being, that will give us the information on where we need to be strategical. So thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins.
All right. With that, I think this, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Superintendent.
So what Member Gallo didn't mention is that was her idea. She was the first one that talked about, can we have the, oh, the separation of the groups? And so I want to certainly, that's why I always appreciate partnership with board members. It was a great idea, and it took us some time to get it actually configured in the technology, but it did come to fruition this week. First time I thought we had it up and running, it didn't. And so, and so it was a bit delayed. I was afraid to announce it, because I thought maybe it would crash again. But it is working now, and certainly pleased with that capacity. And the one thing I would mention on top of what Member Gallo said about those scholarships, they are annual, and so the number may not be as bad. But one thing you mentioned about having exit interviews, I want to make clear, you don't have to start with us and go to private. You may have been in private all along, but you now have a supplement, just so everyone's clear. Those may have been children who've never entered our doors, but now they have a wonderful supplement provided as well. That's a very positive note to end on, Madam Chair.
Yeah. All right. With that, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Yes, ma'am.